Okay, let's go, all set? All right. All right. Call to order, Nussmeffel Town Council meeting, July 17, 2023. Madam Clerk, can you start us in a prayer and the pledge, please?
Thanking you. Thank you for bringing us together today as a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This is how my prayer is going to be tonight. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Ms. Sohara.
Here.
Mr. Oger.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here. Has anyone signed up for?
No.
Okay. Before we move on, does anyone wish to speak in open forum? Okay, gonna move on. The next item of business is Nussmeffel Town Council sitting as Board of Licensed Commissioners, A General Business License, DBA Personal Touch Cleaners located at 175 Eddie Dowling Highway. Applicant Helena Santos. Did you want to come up to the podium, please? Can you, if you want to lower the mic, if you can just state your name and your address, please?
I'm Helena Santos. Is the address from my home or the personal touch?
Your home.
It's 73 Wilderness Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02904.
All right, thank you. And this is the one right across from CVS, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
In the plaza?
Yes.
Yeah. I was just there the other day. I was just there the other day.
Oh, okay. I see a lot of people.
Everything's in water as?
It's a transfer.
Okay. Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Santos?
I got a quick question, unrelated, I'm sure, not license-related, but if, when you do a transfer, if there's people that have belongings there, how does that, how does that work? Like, you take over the business, but there's, all the shirts and stuff is still in, in your inventory, so how does that work?
Whatever I bought, whatever is there is mine now.
So you'd notify, you would notify people if they're?
No, like, suppose I dropped, suppose somebody, right, suppose somebody dropped off shirts when this person owned it, but now they're still there, but now that you own it, is that, is that, that's not an issue?
Not an issue, because everything is in the computer, they just go and buy the name, phone number, then we'll find everything.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for personal touch cleaners.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. Sohara. Mr. Oger.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes. Thank you, you're all set.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you. Am I all set?
You're all set. All right, the next item we're gonna move up on the agenda is new business, A, discussion by council vote of other action on award of construction contract, memorial town building. Ms. Faracy, please.
Madam President, I just need to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Beth Faracy, 802 Pound Hill Road. As you have in your packet, you have all the information with regards to the two windows that we, the Heritage Association, recommend the Town Council vote to approve that they be bought out of the remaining funds in the FY23 capital improvement for the, for buildings, historic buildings in town. This one being the old town hall, Memorial Town Building. The cost is $7,134, and it's going to, it would be going to the same company, Anderson Windows, that is going to replace the two windows that were destroyed during the fire back in November. So in this manner, we would have four windows that match on that backside of that building.
Thank you.
Beth, was there any insurance money that came from the person that hit the, hit the building?
Yes, and that's what's paying for the first two windows that are going up. And it's just that we would like to make sure we get four windows that look alike, because you buy them now, you buy them 10 years from now, they're not gonna match.
Okay.
So, so yes, they're covering all of that, that bit. That was worked out with Mr. Zulinski and the insurance company.
And there's no restrictions on types of windows or anything because it's in a historic district?
That was all reviewed by the Historic District Commission, and Jeff Harris signed off on it, gave his blessing for this type. He had a few changes that he wanted to make to the type of final structure in the window.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Faracy? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve $7,134 to be paid to renewal by Anderson for the Nussmeffel Heritage Association to replace two windows that are there of the Memorial Town Building.
That's a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. Sohara. Mr. Oger.
I'm accused because I'm the treasurer.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Alves, that was, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
And I would imagine this allows the administrator to sign the contract if, if that comes forward as the contract needs.
Well, I should make another motion. I'd like to also make a motion to allow the administrator to sign any contracts necessary to facilitate this $7,134 renewal by Anderson.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. Sohara. Ms. Alves.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna move up another new business topic. F, discussion by council vote of other action on recommendation for Comstock tank inspection and sediment removal.
Good evening. William Dakota, 143 Black Plain Road, Nussmeffel. So I'm here to ask for you to approve the contract with the underwater solutions. We previously, a couple of weeks ago, we had them dive the tank, it's a five-year requirement, to have them dive the tank, do an inspection, and do a cleaning of the sediment on the bottom. And they came in, you know, under the $5,000 window. We, we reached out for three other bids, but we couldn't get anybody else to, to actually bid on the project. It's, it's kind of one of those, there's not a whole lot of companies that do this type of work. We have some that do robotic cleaning. The issue with robotic cleaning is, is with a lot of debris on the bottom, they don't do a very good job of getting in there, so we wanted actual divers to get in there. So when they came out, they found that there was quite a bit of sediment built up on the bottom, and the nature of the work is like you have to move very slowly. So if you go down there and there's two or three inches of sediment, no big deal, it's a one-day job. Well, it turns out that there was more than expected, so they needed an additional day to get in that tank and dive. So the, the quote that they gave us was, you know, $3,909 for the second day of cleaning.
So the total cost is $8,276?
Yes, it is, yep.
And is that coming out of the restricted, the restricted funds, or?
Yes, yep.
It says here, funding from Capital.
Yeah, it was the Cap, that's right, the Capital.
The 10659,000? The 5900, 59,000 account? I have no idea which account that is.
From Capital.
Assuming water, yeah, from Capital.
And we have enough to cover that. No problem.
Now, how, I'm sorry, how often does this have to be done?
It's required to be done every five years. It was done in 2017. We're hoping to avoid it with the tank rehabilitation, but that's gonna, that's not gonna actually, you know, that's not gonna actually start until 2024. And, yeah, and so, you know, it's kind of a long ti, it's kind of a long time to run it out. We're, we're going on six years and to push it the extra year. And as it turns out, the extra sediment that they found in the tank, it's, it's, you know, a pretty good move. We want to get, make sure we get that out of there.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say, are there any, if there are no other questions, I would make a motion.
Any other questions?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve $3,999 to be paid to underwater solutions for the inspection and one-day sediment removal of Comstock tank, which will be funded from Capital 106-59000.
Paul, I think the, the total is $8,276. No, we never approved that, I think, the top amount.
Oh, we never approved the 4286, yeah?
Yeah, no.
There he is, okay. That's all right. No, I thought we had, or this was an additional one to what we had already approved, but it's not.
So the, the, for $3,999 is an additional. So they've already done the work, and it was 42, I believe it was 4286.
Right.
The original cost.
Okay, so you want the?
On the first, on the first dive, right? And so they've already done that work.
Oh, they have, okay. But that is not, we haven't paid them, we didn't approve that 42?
That wasn't approved, that, no, that wasn't approved. We, I did put it out to bid, and they came back as the lowest bidder.
Okay.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I'm following. So you went out to bid?
Yes.
Well, you got the quote, you went out to bid, because it was under the 5,000, but you wanted to see what else was out there. They came back at 40, for whatever, they were the only ones that came back. You selected them at 4286.
That's right.
There was enough sediment at the bottom that they said, hey, there's additional work to be done. So then they said that additional work costs 3990 for a total of 8276.
That's correct.
And because you had already gone out to bid, that was okay, you were fine. So nothing has been paid, just?
Right.
They've done the work, and now you're looking for payment.
That's right.
Okay.
So the total amount.
So the total amount then for my, my motion would not be the 3990, but would be a total of $8,276 total, which again will be funded from the Capital 106-59000.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. Sohara. Mr. Oger.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Next item that will move up, discussion by council vote of other action on recommendation of master price agreement tree trimming slash removal.
Good evening, Ray Pendigas, Director of Public Works. I'm looking for your approval to extend a one-year extension with the State of Rhode Island MPA for tree trimming and removal. The services would be from Stanley Tree Services, 275 George Washington Highway in Smithfield, Rhode Island. This agreement is not to exceed the budgeted 2023-24 amount, amount in the operational and reserve budget of $50,000.
Anyone have any questions?
I just have one quick question. It does say on what we have here that the contract period runs from June 21 through May 31, 2024.
Right, it, it expired actually May 31 of this year.
Okay.
And so the State, the State of Rhode Island was granted a one-year extension for this service, which expires May 31 of '24.
So it's a, it's annual.
Right now, it used to be a two-year, now it's just a one-year, so they're probably gonna do a two-year next year.
Okay, so right now, just the one. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to approve the master price tree trimming removal agreement with Stanley Tree in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second, we have a motion.
Discussion, please.
Yep.
I'm just a little confused, because we're making, we have an ordinance amendment coming up from Mr. Oger, and I believe it was original by both of you, by Kim and Doug. We have an ordinance amendment that's requiring the administrator to get three bids for anything over $2,500, and now we're gonna approve a $50,000 no bid?
It is a bid, it's a state master price agreement.
It's a master price agreement, but?
Which is a bid.
So does other, other people bid on it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Many people.
All right. So what, how's that work? How does the master price agreement work? So if you get a, if you pull a number off the master price agreement for $50,000, you're saying that somebody else, like you, you also got two other bids along with that?
The, the state's procured it already, right? They've already gone through the vetting and the process in a high level. Yeah, David, please, we are more technical.
The state master price agreement is a list of vendors that have already submitted bids to the State of Rhode Island to do work for the State of Rhode Island. And so they'll be on, and they get vetted, and the state puts them on their list saying that their prices are fair and reasonable, having been competitive with, let's assume tree trimming, five companies. There might be a 20 companies listed on there with their price. But they've been vetted by the state as a competitive price. You don't make it on the state's MPA unless your price is competitive. So they're doing the bidding process for you, and because you're on the list, the state law says cities and towns and municipalities may use that list instead of having to go out to bid and save the bidding process. So it's the bidding process that the state uses to put someone on the master price agreement.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So just because?
You have to qualify to be on the MPA. Let me, let me, let me rephrase it. You have to qualify. If you're qualified, you're considered a competitive bid, which is what the statute's all about. Yes, I'm sorry.
But just to be clear, though, just because you pull a, a number off the master price agreement, it doesn't mean that there's not somebody else on the master price agreement that would actually have a, do the job for less, correct?
We can check the master price agreement, but yes, could there be multiple companies on the master price agreement that have different competitive prices? They won't necessarily be the same, that's possible. And, but you can call, because they're on the MPA, you can call them up. Unlike when, when, when you, when you don't have somebody on the master, you're not supposed to be calling people and start getting quotes on the phone unless they're on the MPA or sole source or an exemption, right?
Right.
These people are pre-qualified.
Right, it just seems that we gotta be consistent here. If we're gonna require the administrator to go out and get a bid every time something's $2,500, he's goes, he's gonna go out and get three bids every time something's $2,500 or more based on this amendment to the resolution, then everybody should have to go out and get?
But, but the people that, it's a little bit of an apples and oranges. The, the, the people that he may want to perform a function for the town have not been pre-qualified. They have not been pre-qualified. So he doesn't know whether or not a 5,000 or a $2,500 bid is a good number because they haven't been pre-qualified. The state law says you're blessed, these people are qualified to be pulled off the list, and you know you're getting a fair price. You don't have to go that, you always could go out to bid, but you have the benefit because nobody wants to waste the time of advertising.
Oh, I agree, I agree 100% that it'd be, it'd be a waste of time, but it's not my, it's not my amendment to the, to the ordinance, it's?
But councilman, I'm just saying, the $5,000, the, the no-bid purchasing is not about pre-qualified people. It's about unqualified people. It's about having the ability to select anyone under 5,000 as opposed to anyone who's been pre-qualified in that case. They're just different, they're different animals, I don't, I'm not explaining it right.
It is apples and oranges. It's, it's not even in the same game. If you go on the state MPA, the State of Rhode Island, you can get an MPA for just about anything. There's only certain situations where I have to go out to bid independently of the state MPA. We've gone off to the Massachusetts MPA, we've gone off a California MPA. The bidding process has already been done, they're saving us money and time off the MPA. So there's multiple companies for janitorial services, for paving, all sorts of stuff. So if we have the opportunity and we feel that the price is fair to us, we work off the state MPA list, because it saves me a lot of time and a lot of money.
Oh, I don't doubt it, and I'm sure it does, I'm just looking.
It's got nothing to do with the 25 or $5,000. I'm past that.
It, it does, it does, and it doesn't, though.
No, it doesn't.
Because it does in the sense that the, the spirit of what they're trying to do is say that we should be going out and getting the lowest bid. So in, in base, it's not my, not my amendment, so based on what they're saying is, then everybody should have to go and get? So based on what they're saying is, then everybody should have to go out and get the lowest bid.
Also, I'm, I'm just gonna chime in real quick, 'cause I think Kim was gonna say it. But I think we're getting a little off-topic and blurring agenda items. But in our own ordinance, pre-change, no change, just like almost every other city or town in the state, it also says that if the business owner resides in town, or the business resides in Smithfield, they will always get preference. So even, I believe Stanley lives in town, so even if Ray went out and looked at 1,000 different vendors on the MPA, Stanley, if he was the only one that lived in state, in town, would get preference.
Well, his business is in Smithfield now.
No, he's still a resident, and the ordinance says-
He was in business for years.
But he would still have to be competitive with others for the tree clearing.
Through the MPA, if he's not on the MPA, you have to bid.
His prices are competitive. I don't even wanna get into for 10 years he didn't give us an invoice. So we don't even wanna go on that road.
We're kinda going off topic here, and I just, I just wanna clarify that. When you say what they are trying to do, and I think you're referring to me and Doug, is what we're trying to do is we're trying to make everything streamlined, and we're not trying to get people to pick and choose who they wanna work with. So I don't know how that was referenced, meaning "they," but we're trying to just get everything streamlined. So, um, Stanley Tree is on the MPA, um, so if, I, I don't know what more to say about it.
No, I'm just looking for consistency, that's all.
They're pre-qualified, so-
I just wanna be consistent.
I think the only consistent thing is if you're gonna use the MPA, just search around, say you looked at three other people.
That's all I'm saying.
That's all it is.
I mean, for the paving of the parking lot, we use the state MPA for paving, and that's how De Amber got the job.
Well, I, I get it.
I use it all the time.
I'm not against that, but I'm saying that based on the changes that they wanna make to the, to the ordinance, it's just, you know, if it's good for one, it's gonna be good for everybody.
All right, I'm not even up on that.
Once again, I would like to say that when you refer to "they," meaning me and Doug, on the council, it's the council voted as a whole, with some people not being for it, that we were gonna make things streamlined and all, everyone equal. So this is totally off-topic, 'cause now we're talking about changing, um, things in the charter and everything else. All we're doing is trying to streamline things and make things equal for everybody. So if we can stick to this topic and-
I, I just don't see how adding another level of bureaucracy streamlines anything, but that's okay, go ahead.
You know, just for everyone's edification, the information we have here is very, very detailed about, you know, the hourly rate for how many crews, three people, two people, a self-loading log truck, a stump grinder. So every single thing that they would possibly do is listed here by the hour with the total, um, price that you looked at and-
Right, and there's a lot of work that goes into that before I present this, as I am doing, so.
No, it leaves no stone unturned, actually.
If there's no further discussion, anyone like to make a motion?
Did we?
It's already been.
We do?
I made a motion to approve.
The motion, Ms. Hamilton said- And that was discussion, all right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nordstrom, are you here for the MBRTF?
Yes.
You are, okay. I'm like, Mr. Nordstrom, you're like. Okay, um, all right, let's go to old business. Um, discussion by council vote on other action on status progress report on completion of specific items. Let's go to the Municipal Building Review Task Force.
I'm filling in for Mr. Vadenay. We had a task force meeting last, last Wednesday, and we had four items on the agenda. I won't go in any particular order, but, um, the next town council meeting is August 7th, and we have an invoice to be approved. We have the award of the interim improvements, um, for the, for the police station. We have a contract amendment for Tecton to, uh, finish the work on the one-story building. And included in that is money for them to do public meeting, public hearings. And believe it or not, we also talked about scheduling the public hearings, so if you wanna me to wait till that's discussed later on, that's fine, or I can go into these. So here's my thought processes, and this is totally on me. We didn't, we didn't, we talked a lot about timing and trying to get things moving, because Tecton, wait until August 7th puts them on a really, really tight schedule, which they said that they could do, and I had this thought, uh, before the meeting, that if you could schedule a special meeting, to approve the invoice, um, award the bid, and approve the contract amendment, that'll get them started a little faster. They, they're on a schedule so that based on your approval on, um, August 7th, that we would all come back to the council on September 5th, with the cost estimate and the design for the one-story building. We also talked about scheduling meetings, thinking that probably Mondays, Mondays and Fridays are bad. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays working better. So we thought perhaps Tuesday one week, Wednesday another week, Thursday another week, just to spread things out, 'cause people have other schedules. So we're looking at the week of September 18th, the week of October 2nd, and the week of October 23rd. And I don't think we need a decision right now, but that's availability of everybody, uh, and that was the thought process. So let me preempt what's gonna happen when, when you have to approve things. In terms of the amendment to Tecton, um, they have to finish up some wording on the amendment, but it's for $29,000, $15,000 of which is, uh, for the one-story building conceptual design, $6,000 for cost estimating, and another $8,000 for town council, um, public meetings. And they do have some money left over that they, that we can have additional meetings if three isn't enough. Jeff did say that we asked him about Saturday meetings, and he said, uh, his experience is typically, really doesn't work. People want their Saturdays to be their Saturdays, um, but he said he'll do whatever you all want him to do, so. The second item, the interim improvements, we were, got some good bids. There were four bidders. You may recall that the way we set up, um, the bid, the base bid was, uh, bracing of the interior walls, repair of the roof and the parapet, and an anchoring system, and inspection, and then an anchoring system for the bricks on the front. We also did alternatives. Alternative one was, um, replacement of stairs. That was something that actually the town found, not, not the, uh, the trust. Um, there's some really bad stairs rusted out, metal stairs that really need to be replaced. That was alternative one. In case the inspection reveals the bricks, um, are not in good shape, the alternative two is would be removal of the bricks all the way down to the second-story window ledge and replacement of that. And the third alternative was, um, repair of the walkways. That would be the front side rock, and more importantly, uh, the handicap ramp, 'cause even though some repairs were made with this heavy rain, they, they were still getting water between the building and the ramp, getting into the old EMA area, so that really needs to be addressed. So I'm telling you a lot of stuff in preparation, but anyways, a masonry company called Dubon Masonry, um, their base bid was $265,000, and when you add the alternatives, it's $440,000. The next lowest bidder was Mill City Construction, which I think they're still on 146, right near Old Great Road. Their base bid was $338,399, and with the alternatives, they're about 20, 20,600 more than that lowest bidder. The other ones came in at like 589 and 892, but my experience is it's really good when the first two bidders have pretty, pretty close numbers, um, because, um, that means it's a competitive bid. Fact that there were four people that were bidding on it. Jeff, um, from Tecton is in the process of checking the, um, references for the low bidder. All of them, all of them met the requirements, all four of them qualified. But they did send us, we did a quick look at something they sent us for the meeting, and, um, they've done a fair amount of masonry work, which is, really, that's what the job is, masonry work. And supposedly they have some ideas that would save the town money. So that's one of the things. Oh, the invoice was just, uh, stuff from past due. So, again, this idea about having a special meeting to approve that would give everybody a jump. Like I said, I haven't run it by Tecton. I sent Paul an email at 6 o'clock, telling him I was gonna talk about it. But it would be really helpful, because the spacing of tonight's meeting and the next public meeting is, I think, three weeks. I mean, even if we did it a week earlier, that would be helpful, 'cause the fly in the ointment here is always the estimator, 'cause Jeff doesn't have any control over the estimator, that's an independent contractor that, subcontractor that they have. And they can push these guys to try to do it quickly, but he hadn't done that yet, so.
So you're looking for a special meeting prior to that 8/7 meeting, is that what you're?
Yeah, and get all, there's enough items that I think. And then I would think that you could ask all the questions, less time constraints than trying to do it a regular council meeting.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I don't know about anybody else, but everything you just said, I got about one sentence of it, and I started writing other things. Do you have anything in writing that you can give to us, like every, all the bids that we can look at? You know, not necessarily tonight, but I mean before we meet, because-
My hand's scratching.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I, I mean, I think-
He has that, and that's public, public information, 'cause it's publicly open.
Okay, so-
Do you have that? What does Jeff?
Jeff, I gave them all to Jeff.
So that's what-
Yeah, he has them all.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is I think we need, I don't know about anybody else, we need it.
Well, you get it before the meeting anyways, and I mean, we can get it sooner than-
Yeah, because there's a lot to, you know, there's invoices, there's amendments, there's awarding a bid, there's the first story, there's-
Invoice is actually the easiest thing.
You know, so-
But President, maybe you just, you might wanna just clarify the record, what the document is that's being discussed and who was it produced to?
So what, where did you get?
What is that document?
The four things would be approval of, um, approval of an invoice, and I have the invoice number and all that. Approval of the award of the bid for the interim improvements. Approval of the contract amendment for Tecton to do the, uh, the design for the one-story building. And included in that would be for their meetings and the cost estimate. And the fourth thing would be, we could discuss scheduling, uh, scheduling the meetings.
That's what's on the document.
No, the document.
What's on the document that you're referring to?
The document that he just showed me where the kids just scratched out, you know, not, not formal bids.
I don't, I don't have my email.
And so I need to know, yeah, I mean, I need to know what the bids are, what they were going to do, what this bid is, what they were going to, I mean, in detail, not just, you know, that they're gonna do masonry work, or they're, you know what I mean? So I think we need to have-
Yeah.
A very well-documented set of, uh, of things that we need to look at way before we have a meeting, even on, are we saying the 7th, is that what we're saying?
Well, he-
Well, if we could do it before the 7th, that would be even better, because, again, Jeff can't start his work until a council approves his contract amendment. And what he is producing under that contract amendment is what has to be presented in the public meetings or public hearings.
But we should get it before, though, you know?
He's pretty much-
I can't look at something, I won't look at something the night that we have it and then make a decision.
I don't think we've ever not produced documents for you all to look at, sometimes it's way too much, but-
Yeah.
The tabulation of bids and, uh, oh, yeah, key element, by the way. He will make the recommendation to the town council to award the contract, his firm will do that. And we will have made the recommendation to the town council, but it's really, that's what, that's what you've hired Tecton to do, is review those bids and tabulate them and answer any questions you have.
Right, but I, I still think that we need to see everything before, even a recommendation, in case we want to have a different, you know, go a different way, you know, we can't-
Yeah, but this is just for the, um, work to be done on the, the, uh, old school, as I have seen it for years.
Right, this has been-
Uh, for the, for the trust to keep it up and safe, for safety's sake, am I right?
This has been publicly bid, and the rules of awarding a bid are pretty, pretty specific. You have to have preponderance of evidence to deny the low bidder the work. And, but you also deserve all the information you need, and to have Jeff here to explain.
Paul, are you looking for a, a vote tonight on something, that's why I'm a little confused?
No, no, I'm trying, what we decided to do Thursday is prep you guys for what's coming.
I understand, okay.
Coming, so that when it comes, you're not gonna have the-
Okay.
The, the shock of it, so that's the four things. I mean, approving a contract, approving an invoice is fairly routine.
So what we would need is a packet with all that information in, prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Which they've always given.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And so like I say, what Jeff's working on right now is final wording on the contract amendment, which is not a big deal. He's checking the, uh, references on the low bidder. And I think that's it.
Okay, can I ask a question? And maybe it's for later. Do we think three meetings educational is enough? I thought when Tecton was originally speaking, they were saying it was like four or five, et cetera, could be as many as we want.
He just put meetings.
I don't think three's enough, personally.
He put meetings, we talked about at least having three, trying to figure out to get, we didn't, I didn't realize that you had that agenda right on there, but to at least get you thinking, his availability and what, what a good, he can't, he doesn't have anything to present until you approve whatever he presents on September 5th.
So do we think it's realistic, a month, really, a month and a half of education?
He said he's, he's seen these things drag out, he's seen these things fast-tracked, and he said, you know, it has a unique way of working out, once people know, um, what their options are in terms of attending a meeting.
I was gonna say, is there a Zoom or Teams option at least? 'Cause I can tell you right now, those, I don't think you're gonna get a ton of people physically. I mean, we had how many meetings, and I think we had probably, what, 10, 15 people on average over the course of four meetings, so. I think the most people we ever had at one of the MBRTF meetings was when we were actually talking about the enabling legislation. That room was pretty, pretty busy.
Yeah.
But I don't think most people pay attention until, I bet you there's probably people that don't even know there's a special election coming up in November.
Right, and that's what dictates the schedule, by the way, right?
Right, yeah.
Well, and it's, is it really a special election, or is it a congressional election?
It's a special congressional, and there's also the presidential primary, special election coming up in February.
So what's the date of the, of the primary, the 7th?
November the 7th.
I think that's what I heard, that's the first Tuesday.
Oh, no, the primaries nine, five, right? The primaries nine, five. The actual general election, I believe, is eleven, seven.
Right, right.
That would be the first Tuesday in November.
So all of these that we're suggesting, nine eighteen, ten two, and ten twenty-three are all after the primary?
Well, that's...
That's okay, because I found...
That's okay, because it's not going to be on the primary election.
Yeah.
It's only going to be on the... It's not like it's on both ballots.
So the bond issue is, would be on the November seventh ballot.
Can I, one second, can I just ask a point of order? So if there's a primary on, on September fifth, there's no meeting, right? Because you're going to be busy, right? Will we still be having a meeting that day?
That's Tuesday, the meeting will be...
Tuesday.
Because the Monday's a holiday.
I think I asked for the, I think I sent an email out a little while ago to try to change that.
Right.
See if we could have one meeting or change the date.
Because the fourth is Labor Day, and then the fifth is the primary. So we got to find out, because you're scheduling Tecton to come on the fifth, is that what, is that what I'm hearing?
They're, they're, okay, they've worked out their schedule.
Because you're talking about nine, five meeting.
There's going to be a push, but they're, they committed to having everything available to you on that September fifth meeting.
Right, so you're already scheduling nine, five, but I'm not sure we have a meeting that day, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so if it's the sixth, it'll be the sixth, but even more important, how, if you can squeeze in a special meeting?
I, I think I know what the Madam President's saying, is if for some reason, say, we didn't meet until the week after, now it's even a week further out, right?
Right, because now the special meeting is, is like, less than a week away.
Yeah, so you could have done this, so say you do a special meeting before the August seventh. If we don't meet until the week of like September eleventh, that week, which is a whole week after that fifth meeting, now you're even closer to the general election. So it's the education and the timing of it all.
Right, but if you have a special meeting, and even if the only thing that you do in that meeting is to approve the amendment for Tecton, that gets them to start their work sooner.
I don't think that's the thing we're discussing right now. I think we're talking about the September meeting, when they come back with the single story and everything. That's the piece of trying to figure out, because that piece is, you just said, is important in the education.
I understand everything you're saying, and I'm...
I agree with you on having maybe a meeting before August seventh or not.
But are you saying two special meetings, like moving up the September fifth meeting earlier, is that, I guess, I'm just trying to understand because it's getting...
Again, I was just thrown out to get the contract amendment, the award for the improvements to the building done, approve the invoice. Because sooner we can get Tecton started on what they need to prep for with the public meetings, the better off we all will be in terms of being educated. But that, yeah.
So are they going to present to the council before they present to the public? Or the first time we see it, it's going to be when they present to the public on, I guess, nine eighteen, on the first proposed date?
The first time you would see it would be that, whenever that first meeting is September, the way we talked about things.
All right, yeah, that's the meeting we were just discussing, is if we don't meet and say until the week after, because it's the primary election, and say it just doesn't work that first week, there's not a lot of time between that meeting and potentially that first public meeting. So if there's any changes that are made or anything like that, that's going to mess up their whole schedule, I'm assuming, right?
If you bear with me, I think that that would be the reason why maybe you have two special meetings. You have one to approve the contract, and if they can get stuff done before, like the end of August, the beginning of September, that could be handled maybe in a special meeting.
So now, so a special meeting?
I wasn't thinking of the two, but that's a great idea.
Yeah, you might need it.
Yeah, because if we, depending how we can fit something in the week of the primary, we're probably better off going into August as a special meeting.
And see if I hand scratched anything here.
Because you already have a meeting on the twenty-first, right, so...
Unless we keep it very, very late.
Yeah, do you think we could turn that twenty-first meeting into Tecton, or is that too, still too tight?
Scrambling here, hold on.
That's all right, I understand.
I didn't leave anything over there, did I?
No.
Nope.
I mean, you have time to get back to us, I mean, you could always send an email through the clerk, and we can kind of take a poll. Because I know we're putting you on the spot, you don't know everyone's schedule.
We never have meetings on a Friday, correct? Have we ever had a meeting on Friday?
We had a budget meeting once on a Friday.
Oh, God, you know, budget meeting.
About it.
No, I, I need like five surgeries, but it'll be three days in the hospital, so I'll be out during the week. It'll be a weekend jet, yeah, I don't think so either.
Yeah, I would think if we get them started earlier, that they could, they should be able to get something, the earlier you can approve the contract, the earlier they can...
Absolutely.
Have the information available for...
Your committee has never been late on anything, has been well-prepared, and we've been very lucky to have you.
So...
And the company that we're working with.
And when you say the contract, which contract are you referring to?
The amendment to, for the one-story, right?
Yes.
The one-story?
Construction contract, this, when I talk about contract, it's a construction contract. Tecton is an amendment to their existing contract. So that's the amendment that I talk about for twenty, twenty-nine thousand or whatever. Yeah. It's a continuation to their existing...
So Mr. Nordstrom, the, the public meetings, that wasn't in the original contract for to hold meetings?
No, their public meetings were for what we've done up to date.
Oh, so the ones that we've been having?
Right, but they still said they had, they had some money left over that they could apply to this contract amendment. And they're only going to bill us for the number of meetings if they, some crazy reason, we decide there's only two, they would only bill us for two, so.
All right, so, go ahead.
Did you say nine thousand?
Twenty-nine.
No, for just the meetings?
Um...
Six thousand.
Six thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, six one six.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
And that would be their materials and presentations.
Oh, six thousand is cost estimating, right?
I...
So that's over two thousand dollars a meeting.
Printed out blank calendars, if that helps.
Well, it's because they have to do all the work to that meeting.
Like, everybody's got calendars, I think, Paul, and his phone.
And Mr. Nordstrom, do you know what they're planning on doing for the nine eighteen, ten two, and ten twenty-three?
For the what?
Are they going to actually, the, the three meetings that we've tentatively, you know, looking at their schedule, that they're available ten, nine eighteen, ten two, and ten twenty-three? Are they going to be doing the marketing of that, and are they going to be doing, you know, putting out, I mean, how, how do they plan on getting people to meetings?
Great questions that can be asked when we have the special meeting. If you have the special meeting to approve the contract amendment, we'll get them there to explain what their, what's up their sleeve, I guess.
Personally, I think you would need like five or six meetings. I think you would need at least two in, in September. First week, I agree, the first week in October, take the Columbus holiday week off. Then you should do one the sixteenth to twenty-third, the week of Halloween, you could do one, because early voting starts too. So if we wait, you may already have missed people.
Yep. I think that's why they want, I think that's why they want to start that week of September eighteenth, to get the first one underway. But again, they would have to meet with you, or we would have to meet with you now prior to September fifth to go over, you know, what the plan of attack is, what their recommendations are, how, how you all want to tweak it.
Do we know how much time they need from the time we approve to when they're ready?
Well, I would say, based on what they told us at the meeting, September fifth, they would make the presentation to you, they'd be ready on September eighteenth.
No, if, if we approve, say, we have a special meeting, we approve everything, have them move forward, and then meet with us prior to a special meeting?
Yeah. I, I would interpolate and say if you do it a week earlier, I mean, if you do it in a week, that'll buy them two weeks before September fifth.
So the last week of August, maybe?
If you...
Yeah, end of August.
Right.
As you mentioned, the end of August.
Because we would already have a meeting on the twenty-first, do you think we could turn that meeting into having Tecton here, or you think that's too tight, or?
I don't know, can I look on my calendar?
Yeah, absolutely.
Madam President?
He gave us all the coffee.
Yeah, so we already have a meeting here.
So they're talking about being ready here?
Yeah.
Madam President, I have a question. You're saying the twenty-first, what?
Yes. August.
Oh, I thought, so I just wanted to remind you, September, we did change the meeting from the eighteenth to the nineteenth, if someone did request that.
Yeah, but August, we have the seventh and the twenty-first, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do the twenty-first. I think we need time, right?
Yeah, yes. And then the week of the fifth, we don't know what we, what we're doing yet that week, right?
It's very difficult to have a meeting, we can't have it the day of the election.
And you, and Monday's a holiday, so if anything, Wednesday, but...
It's hard to do on Wednesday, too, because we're working on the board meeting on the district ballot, if, if we have a...
So we probably have to move it to the next week or not have a meeting that week.
So again, the rub is between today, the seventeenth, and the next council meeting on the seventh, that's three weeks. So if we could do something in between to get them started, anything we can do, like, and again, I haven't checked with them, but...
So, so if, can I ask a question, Madam President? So if, say we had a meeting next week, right, just hypothetical, how, how long is the cost estimated? Is it like a month, is that what the run-out time is?
No, 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 they were talking two to three weeks, they were going to try and squeeze the people for two weeks.
So if we had a meeting sooner rather than later, I think I know what you're, what you're saying, Mr. Nordstrom. If we had a meeting, say, like next week, we could, yeah, we could get everything started, and then you would have a lot more dates to play with in August in terms of if you were going to schedule another special meeting, where they could, in theory, present on the single-story cost and any other cost revisions at that time.
And I would do my best to get him to the meeting if he do it next week.
I think that's the point Paul's been trying to make, is just, we need, we need to get that started, because that will delay that. We may not need to meet in September.
And that could potentially turn into us being able to meet on the twenty-first, which is a regular meeting, or if we have to go a week sooner.
Yeah, yeah, I think that works. I haven't, I keep checking my email, I haven't reacted from anybody, but I will summarize it when I, when we're done. You want me to find out days next week when they're available? I mean, yeah, I mean, even if the only thing that's done is the contract amendment, that, to me, is a critical path item. And if you want to wait till August seventh to approve the invoice and the award of the construction contract...
Yeah, because we need time to look at it.
That's fine, I just thought that, maybe I shouldn't have thought, huh?
So do you want to poll everyone, your task force and Tecton, to see what nights they're available next week? And then you can send that through the clerk, and she can kind of poll us? Is there any night that works better for the council?
Monday?
Yeah, might as well stick with Monday.
Uh, July, we're still...
Next, next week.
Twenty, that's twenty-four? Okay. And just for flexibility, have a, at least another day?
I can do Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday works for me.
Monday or Tuesday, twenty-four, twenty-five, what about you? Twenty-four, twenty-five, Claire, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Absolutely.
And I will, well, we will communicate with the town clerk.
Yeah, and then Joanne, you don't mind sending it out to us, and we can kind of poll what nights are best? Okay.
So I'll, I'll run those two days by you. I'll, I'll copy you.
And then we can go from there to see if we have to do something special in August.
And again, if, if that's the only thing you want to talk about, that's fine, might, might actually be better
Okay.
To do that, just one item, because it could be far-reaching.
Yeah, no, that works out.
Yeah, works out.
And like I said, what, what Tecton has to do with the contract amendment is just like wordsmithing.
Yeah.
So he's probably already got it done, so we can get that in pretty quick.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll wait to hear from you.
That was easy, huh? And I was the interim, see? This is all they could come up with.
Yeah, we'll wait to hear from you, and we'll schedule that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess now we can get back, starting from the top, because there's no one else. Bill, you're not here for anything else, right?
Just the twenty-six water services.
See, okay, new business discussion by council vote or the redaction on agreement for installation of twenty-six water services located at Mechanic Street and Old Great Road.
William Dakota, one four three Blackberry Road, North Smithfield, Low Water and Sewer Superintendent.
Thank you.
So I'm here tonight to ask you to approve Boyle and Fogarty as the contractor for the twenty-six homes that are going to be connected to the, the water main on Mechanic Street and Old Great Road. So unfortunate, not unfortunately, but they were the only bidders on the project. We did reach out to a few, to a couple local contractors, and actually, three local contractors, and there was no interest in it. And they came up, I mean, they're, they're a great contractor. They've done a lot of work, they, in the town, they've done a lot of work in the state, so they're good to work with. But we always like to see a couple of choices, unfortunately, in this case, we only had one.
So we have used them in the past in town?
I'm sorry?
We have used them in the past in town.
Yep, yep, they've done quite a bit of work in town, actually. I believe, yeah, I believe that it was before me, but they actually installed the water main on Mechanic Street and Great Road. So they're very familiar with that particular project.
Okay. So now, how is this going to work? Is it just going to be as people come forward? So we're just going to call them as we get the request?
Yeah, so we've, we've, so, I mean, we, I broke down the bid this way because it was not knowing that we were going to be doing all of them, we had to kind of break it up and say, you know, give us a price for each individual part of the job. And so far, I believe we have three responses. We did send out the letter, we've got three responses that are looking to hook up.
Okay.
And a couple that are, you know, have some questions. That was just recently, we, that letter just went out like last week.
And we already have three responses?
Yep.
So can you just, for people, and, you know, who are listening, and then for our edification, for the, for the record, just explain what it is we're talking about? We know what we're talking about, but just so that you can explain
Okay.
what these services are going to be and what the residents are requesting of us.
Okay, so, so there's a, a section of town from Mechanic Street to Old Great Road that they found that they had contaminated wells. And they, it, and it pointed to, to fill-ups. So as part of that, we connected the homes that had, well, that, they paid to put the, to connect the homes that were contaminated to the water line. And then there are twenty-six homes that there were no contaminants found. But for, you know, just to err on the side of caution, we, because they're on the water line, we thought it was smart to get them connected to the water line in case there's a future issue in that area, their wells become contaminated.
And that's, you're saying that so far, three people have responded to a letter that you sent out?
Right, so, yeah, so Maura, Maura had sent out registered letters to everybody, so we'll, you know, we'll get a receipt once they're all delivered. I spoke with her, I believe, about this on Friday, and at that time, she had like, there were four or five responses, right? Three are looking to connect, and two have questions about it. So we plan on meeting with them and going over the, you know, what the situation is.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Maybe, maybe it doesn't apply, but I said there wasn't a lot of people that bitted. Is this a service that's allowed through the MPA? And did we check the MPA to see if there was anybody else that would at least be willing to do this type of work?
Actually, I didn't check the MPA. Yep, I didn't. We just put it out for bid.
Yeah, no, I get it. I was just curious.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't.
You put it out of bid.
What's that?
Put it out of bid.
Yeah, we put it out of bid. And like I said, I reached a few contractors that I was hoping would be interested in it, you know, the local contractors. One of them is from Cumberland that I worked with over there, a very good contractor, you know. But unfortunately, they just weren't interested in the job.
Everybody's busy.
Yeah.
So each of these, you have it broken down, labor and materials, rock and boulder excavation, one-inch meter, pot mix asphalt and materials, right? So each one of these may be different, right? So each one of these installations to tie into that water line, depending on how far it is from the street, how far the house is and...
Exactly, yep. Yeah, so, I mean, if they're crossing their driveway, I mean, some may not come into contact with any asphalt. They may go right up the grass, you know, so they don't have to deal with the asphalt. Maybe they're on any boulders, but, you know, there is some rock up in that area, so you got to be prepared for that. Anything over 300 feet, they're going to have to put in a meter pit. So, you know, we had to account for that. And there, once they connect to the public water system, they all have to be brought up to code on the inside of the house. So that's your backflow preventers, your, you know, your expansion tanks and things like that. So that connection, they're all going to need that, so. So it was really the, without knowing exactly what the entire project would cost and exactly how many people would be interested in connecting to this, it was really the only practical way to put the bid out there that I could see anyway.
And then I noticed they're holding that bid until that June 2025 date that we agreed with, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions?
So it's not a dollar amount, right? We can't really say how much it's going to be.
When, when they get out there and we look at the job, we can actually be, with these numbers, we can say, hey, it's $90 a foot. It's 100 feet. It's going to be a $9,000. That's material and insulation. Are they going to cross asphalt? So we'll be able to calculate it and watch it, you know, and hold them to the, to the prices that they gave us. But we can't really tell. I mean, some, some of the houses are 25 feet, some of them are longer, so it's really...
So do we want to have a not to exceed number?
Shouldn't it not exceed the $260,000 that was set aside for that?
Right? Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I think that's how we have to make a motion.
Well, that wasn't the agreement. The agreement was if it, if it was coming under the $260,000, then we keep it. If it goes above the $200,000, $260,000, we eat it. So I don't think that you can do a not to exceed. Who knows what it's going to turn out to be?
I think we just have to do it based on the bid specs that were, that were done by Boyle and Fogarty on this date and that they're holding the prices until June 30th, 2025.
I'd agree.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the contract to Boyle and Fogarty for the installation of 26 water services located on Mechanic Street and Old Great Road. Are we doing a total dollar amount?
No, I was just do it...
We're just due for labor and materials per foot of one-inch water service installation, landscape restoration of $90 per linear foot, rock and boulder excavation per hour, $700 per hour. Furnish and install one-inch meter pit of $2,750 each. Furnish and install hot mixed asphalt per ton of $190 per ton. Materials and labor for the connection of the water service to the household plumbing must meet all local plumbing codes. Meter to be provided by the water department for $1,900 each. Boyle and Fogarty has agreed to hold these prices steady until June of 2025. Does that work, Mr. Solicitor?
I think that's right. I think that's exactly how I should make the motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It was a note, I guess, that the TV indicated, said it's something on about if required. Is that the need of if it's required, is that correct?
That's right.
Yep.
Where's that?
You have to deal with, like, 300 feet qualified for any...
So if there's any break in, I mean, if they can get stands on 500-foot roll of service material, then they wouldn't need one. But it's really, it's 300 feet is what...
Or don't mention the amount, just mention if needed, right?
Yes, if needed, yeah.
Did you see that as a need?
I don't, no.
It's the third one, the third item referred to, furnish install a one-inch meter pit.
Oh, I thought I said that.
But if required.
Oh, okay, so then I'll amend that line item to say furnish install one-inch meter pit if required.
If it's not required, then the job...
And I'll second that.
I see that one.
And can we just kind of make a note that every project will vary, so not necessarily every project will actually require this, this amount, right?
Every project requires the amount as listed, except for the meter pit.
Okay.
We just don't know what each project's total cost will be.
Right.
Because it depends on the length and the difficulty.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you. Is there anything else you have, Bill? Are you all set?
Almost.
All set, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go back up to the top. Discussion by council vote, other action on payment of bills.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, I have three. I was wondering why they were late, why the bills were late and we only got them today.
Because we're in the middle of two fiscal years.
Wait, what, please?
In the middle of two fiscal years, and Denise took vacation the week prior. So it didn't, it got done later than it normally would have.
All right. So I have a couple, one question here is on the one, two, third, one, two, three, third page.
They're numbered.
They're numbered, nope.
On the side here.
Yeah, they are, on the left side.
Mine's cut off. Oh.
Oh, but the pages aren't numbered.
No, but item number.
Okay, yeah. So item number 61, 1-5-1-9,000, Tecton, 2,500, police station renovation. Do we know what that is?
That should have been for the sidewalks, if I'm not mistaken. That was for the sidewalks at the, at the police station.
Sidewalks...
They did a little bit of work on it because it was a hazard, so.
So they've already...
They're requiring, I think, all the trust, correct, sidewalk situation.
There was some roofing or something, a leak.
I don't think it included the antenna, yeah.
Yeah, it was definitely just the sidewalks, which was facilitated by TPW. Why it was sold alone. The price, the amount of load of TPW did work.
And, you know, the ramp there should be closed, because part of where they put in is almost floating up. And if it's docked, it wouldn't take much, especially if they're in a walk, et cetera. Do not be rolling down, but flying down.
So that was paid to Tecton or we did the work? Why is it 2,500?
It was, it was paid to, it was paid to Tecton to, to look at it, essentially look at it. And the work was done by TPW, and it came out of the bond fund.
Okay. Then on, well, number 27, so it's several pages after, 27, 28, 29, and 30, Vinnie Vergasta. Can you see that?
Yep, give me a second.
So I think that might be wrong. I might be, I might be wrong, but I think what it's saying is $5,700 for the tax administration software, tax collection software, water software, and sewer software, so...
Yeah.
I like Vinnie a lot, but...
I, yeah, I think it was dragged down. I think you're right. Because the, the vendor name should be different. It shouldn't be Vincent Vergasta. It should be the, should be Vision or Northeast, whatever you want to call them, for the tax.
Okay.
I think that was accidentally dragged down.
Yeah, yeah. I think, and then the other last one I had, I'm just, I, on the first page, so it would be numbers 26 down to 41, North Smithfield Tax Collector. Are we, who are we, are we reimbursing?
Abatements and, yeah, reimbursements, yeah. It was just year-end stuff that we had to take care of.
Just to clean it up?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So one question on the... Am I not, sorry? On the TIAA, that first number, is that clearing, cleaning up that situation?
I'm sorry, which, which number?
On the, the page with the, the ACHs for the TIAA crap?
Yes, that is, yeah.
That's fixing that?
Mm-hmm.
So is that all set now?
That's fine, all done.
Anyone have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, what number am I using here? 2,911?
So I think they have to do two different numbers, don't they?
I think you use them both, because it's two fiscal years.
So there's the 2022, 2023, and then there's the 2023, 2024, but the total would be the 2,911, correct?
Eight, oh...
It's up to Solicitor. I'm not sure which one you would prefer.
I didn't hear what he said.
He said it's, that's the total.
Is it, or is it... So we're not paying the 205?
No, the 2,911 is the total, I think.
This is from the last...
What he's saying is the 205 is included.
Yeah, that's the total total on the right.
Is it though?
When you say from the last fiscal year, do you mean last month and this month?
Yes.
So it would be that period? Do we pause this?
Period.
Yeah, can we just take, can we just, I think we need to revisit this because we don't really know what the number is.
Well, we know that was one, well, we found one vendor issue, so maybe we'll just come back next week and just...
We'll have to send out the bills regardless, though, because they need to be paid.
But you can't send them until we authorize payment.
What I'm saying is that we should, if we should approve it today. If, what was the thing that was wrong?
Well, we don't know which total.
The total, the total of both, the total of month 13, well, period 12 and then period 1, in this time, well, period 12 and period 13, is $2,911,263.35. That's what the council will be approving. If you want to...
Because they're always two months, is that what it is?
Yeah, at that very end, it's period 12 and period 13, and we have to roll out.
So it's two fiscal years, but it's two months, so it's, I don't know, this, I'm guessing, is it, are we talking June and July?
It's part of...
Part of June and part of July.
Right, right, right.
It crosses the fiscal year.
But shouldn't fiscal year '24 only be July? June is the prior fiscal year, unless we authorize expense, right?
You're saying payment of bills, I don't know if payment of bills have to be paid in the fiscal year, period.
Yeah, when, when, when a council is approving the, the payment of bills, it doesn't have to be exactly that 30 days.
Right.
It can be, because we have, we have meetings all over the place. If we did it that 30 days, we would never get our vendors paid.
Right, no, I'm not disagreeing in that. What I'm saying is, so if we paid something, you're saying it's June and July, so if we pay for fiscal year '24, so if we pay... When you're saying '23, '24, are you talking about the prior fiscal year? And so there's two fiscal years? It's, it's not the current fiscal year, it's the end of June, so there should be no July.
There is a, '23, '24, on, on the right side, is, is part of, that's part of July. That's part of fiscal year '24.
So let's get rid of the dual years. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. Is it fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23?
'23.
And now we're in fiscal year '24?
Yeah, we're in fiscal year '24.
Or is it '23 and '24?
'23, '24.
Okay.
'23, '24, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I'm following. There's a lot of number dates here.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know about this number. I don't...
We have a meeting next week.
I don't think it matches.
It doesn't.
Because these, these two numbers are 338, and then you add these in, right?
Mm-hmm.
338 and...
Sorry?
Auntie, if we have a meeting next week, would it be soon enough to have...
What, what day next week? Are we having it, Monday?
We're thinking either Monday or Tuesday. Would that be sufficient? I mean, because we have so many questions and we're kind of back and forth on...
Yeah, I can't get these numbers to tie, so I don't, I need some clarification.
So we could, Monday, but yes, but to explain that, so, I wish I could put it up here, but the numbers on this side right here, the, the total amount right down here, on the left side?
205, 839.
Yep, that's the, that's fiscal year '23.
Yep.
Right? And then on the right side, we have fiscal year '24 of 2.9 million, right? That is payments for library, school, fire department. That's why that number's such more, so much more exaggerated for that side. With, I mean, realistically, we could have split this into two documents, but Denise thought it might be better, because she's done it in the past where she puts both fiscal years on one piece of paper.
So that's the way I'm used to seeing it, is you have '22, '24, and then a total. So the 2,911, 263, does that not exclude, does that include the 205,839? Because you, or it includes it?
That's what I said.
No, it's, it's just 24, it's just 24. The left side is 23, the right side is 24, so you're...
So what I'm trying to get at is a motion to approve, if we were to go this route, you would need to do 205, 839, 18, and 2,911, 263, 25.
Correct.
Okay, I think that's where the confusion's at. We were hearing they were the same, but they're...
Yeah, I know.
Because these numbers here is this number.
Right, yeah, no, it makes sense. We're just missing a total.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to approve both of these.
Yeah, I agree.
It's the 2,9 number is combined.
Next year, let's add a total.
We're gonna, I think, I think next year, we're going to have two different pieces of paper.
Yeah, this is, yeah. All right, so does somebody want to make a motion for a 2022-23 payment of bills?
I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year '23 for 2022, 2023 calendar years in the amount of $205,839.18 per the review of the finance department.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. And then the second payment?
I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year '24 total in the amount of $2,911,263.35 per the correction for that one vendor, as discussed, and the review of the finance director being complete.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you. Discussion by council vote, other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Eight town council minutes of June twelfth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and communications from the animal control monthly report of June two thousand twenty-three, North Smithfield Municipal Court monthly report for June two thousand twenty-three, North Smithfield Police Department monthly report for June two thousand twenty-three, and North Smithfield Fire and Res, Rescue monthly report for June two thousand twenty-three.
Madam President, I'd like to pull up the minutes of June twelfth.
Anyone else? Anyone like to approve the, uh, remaining consent agenda, minus the minutes of June twelfth?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda min, uh, consent agenda minus the minutes of June twelfth.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Uh, so just on the back page on the facilities manager, uh, I just wanted to also note that, um, I had spoken to Ms. Alves about the idea, um, and she had agreed, and then stated she would like to begin discussions we got in the hiring of facilities manager. So I just want that added.
And, uh, if I can just piggyback on that, I believe at the next, at a meeting after this, the town administrator had requested that the minutes be heard and wanted everyone who was in favor of this to be mentioned in the minutes, and I just wanna make sure that we go back and do that because I'm pretty sure that everyone was in agreement with, um, with this, so if you could just kind of listen to that, and if everyone was in agreement with it, if you could just make a motion, uh, some sort of mention of that in the minutes. Thank you. Anyone else have anything else on this, uh, agenda? I mean, on these minutes? If there's no further discussion, anyone like to make a motion regarding the amended June twelfth minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended June twelfth minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Okay, uh, the next one is, uh, old business.
Three to five.
Yeah, discussion by council vote or other action on status slash progress report on completion of specific items. Let's jump down to the, uh, number two, which is the three to five year forecast. Any update on that?
Uh, Steve, I'm pretty sure the last time with our meeting, with Vice President and President, um, I, I contacted Steve Maseroni, our, uh, financial advisor, and I think he said he would be available for our August meeting. Uh, for the seventh, is that what it is?
Okay.
Yeah, he said he'd be available for that. He said he would make it. Unless, you know, something else happens.
And, uh, Anthony, he was going to not only talk about the tangible issue, but he was also gonna talk about the debt levels and the servicing for the police station too, correct?
He said he would be here to answer any questions and, yep, whatever, whatever the council needed.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, great, thank you. Anyone have any other questions on that? Okay, Grants?
Madam President, I believe you received an email from the town planner, Mark Corillo, uh, July fifth, uh, you along with Council, uh, Council of Borogod, Finance Director, uh, and also the Assistant Planner, Bobby Monigan. So finally, uh, there was a conversation with, uh, with HUD, and they reiterated that monies for the four million dollars can be utilized for new construction or rehabilitation. If one wanted to purchase property with that money, it would have to go before Congress, which is a very lengthy, uh, procedure, and there's no timeline to that. So that was what came down, uh, from that discussion. I believe, uh, Council President and Council of Borogod have that email. It's public record, be happy to make more for everybody else. Uh, part two. If you can recall, Lisa Andoja was the, uh, one-month grant writer. Even though she's no longer working for the town, she sent me an email on Friday expressing that through the House Appropriations Committee, that the one million dollars for, uh, the grant that was applied for, for the property on Halliwell for passive recreation, such things as benches, shade trees, possible other, um, uh, amenities that could be added there, it has to go before Congress and Senate now, and of course, the president has to sign it. So it's made it past the first hurdle. Again, this is all preliminary. Uh, I think that's about it as far as grant updates. Let's see, let me check my notes. Oh, I have a question. So we, we received two, um, two bids for grant, two proposals for grant writers. Where's Town Council with that, reviewing those?
We were gonna ask the same question. I thought there was supposed to be a committee put together and.
By Town Council, correct?
We have, we, so the committees all set.
Committee, the committee is established.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I thought it was not established.
No, it has not been established.
So the committee, yeah, so, sorry, members.
Well, we do have that as another agenda.
It was not, yeah.
To go down to there.
We were gonna establish, but we tabled it because there was questions over who on the council should represent. Originally, it was gonna be me and Kim, and then John wanted to represent, and that's why it got held up. So, it's in limbo.
So, that, yeah.
And I like my name thrown in there also.
That needs to be, uh, we need to discuss.
I was gonna say, that, that sounds like a special meeting. Um, so, how, how do we? Just so I know, how, how do we go about that, so?
Just come back to it, and then that could later on the agenda, right?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so.
Okay, gotcha.
But I just wanted to mention on the grants, um, I know we had requested that we get something in our packet, um, every week, like an Excel spreadsheet or something with updates. Um, can we please get that? Every meeting, so we have updates?
Okay, I can say right now that I gave you the update verbally of what was going on with the project.
Yeah, I would like to have it in our packet, so we can have it.
Every, every meeting you want that, okay.
Yeah, with updates, please.
Absolutely.
May I ask a question about grants? So, um, Mr. Administrator, the, um, St. Paul Street.
That's on here, though.
Grant, is that on here? Is it? I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Is it, is it? I didn't see it. Oh, it is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm jumping, jumping ahead.
Okay.
Well, it's two St. Paul Street grants. Right, there's the original that we.
We could, if I may suggest, wait till we get to that, cause you're off, you're off.
That's what I had, that's what I had mentioned.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so back to grants, not a future agenda item. Are there any DEM grants, or like, any other grants out there, um, for small businesses or anything like that, like Take It Outside, or stuff like that, that we may be able to apply for, or?
I think that, if you're referring to the Take It Outside, was that to help restaurants and?
Yeah, and that, or really also to DEM. I know every year, one year's recreation, one year's like open space. I don't know if, um, if we're looking at any of those, or, you know, grant opportunities as well.
Uh, I think at a previous meeting, I did ex, express that the outside open to acquire property from DEM is cyclical.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we don't have a grant writer at this time to pursue that type of opportunity, so. I could find out, I could ask the planner to see what the schedule is, if there is any grant money coming in the future, available to.
Yeah, it'd be great. If the state's making money available, we might as well jump on that and take it, take opportunities where the state allows.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next one is discussion by council vote or other action on amendment to section six dash four of the North Smithfield Code of Ordinances, chapter six, article one, entitled Purchasing and Competitive Bidding Procedure. Mr. Ogier?
Yep, uh, so this follows, this is follow-up from a meeting in June, I wanna say, um, where we had originally discussed making some changes to section six point, uh, six-four, uh, and so in working with the solicitor, um, one of the really areas to focus on was the dollar amounts between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, and the language has changed. Um, you'll notice in here, it doesn't mention the town administrator at all, um, and it puts all the, uh, focus back on the purchasing agent, which is the finance director, and it says if the amount of the procurement is no more than twenty-five hundred dollars, but no more than five thousand, the finance director shall attempt to secure three firm quotations from qualified vendors and award on the basis thereof. So it's really just speaking to a good faith effort to go out and, in these no-bid situations, to go out and attempt those three quotes. The other edit, uh, was we added in a responsible bidder section, um, and then there was one small other edits somewhere, this is really tiny.
Advertising?
Yeah, advertising, there was a verbiage, uh, some verbiage needed to be changed from the existing ordinance. Um, I can't find it right now, for some reason. Oh, yeah, I need glasses. Um, where it said the value of which is five thousand is adjusted by CPI or more, um, and it took out the not to exceed amount, so. I think the, what I recommend, or what I would propose is that we accept the amended version, um, and then we open the public hearing, and then we'll get back to the business after the public.
For the record, I think the amended version is revised, it has a thing attached to.
Oh, revised seven eleven?
Which reflects the date.
Yep.
Of the revision.
Yep.
So if you move to substitute the document under consideration with this document, it includes the edits that the Vice President just, um, scrapped. And then I would ask that you open up an open, the public hearing on the revised.
Okay. So, uh, what you're saying is then we would vote on the revised version first before public hearing?
Yeah, no, this is, that's the revised version is what, you're not gonna vote on anything to approve it to the end.
Right.
After the second meeting, but you're gonna, you're gonna accept the revised version, open up the public hearing, cause you want the public hearing on the revised version.
Okay.
And then, whatever comments there are, I guess there's.
Okay.
There won't be many.
Okay, anyone?
I would say just make a motion, if you wanted to, simply, just at this point, if you're ready to make, uh, a motion to open the public hearing.
To skip that first step?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Then I would just say, make a motion to.
Accept.
Accept the, um, open public hearing on the revised version.
So then I'll make a motion to accept the opening of the public hearing on the revised version of section six-four code of ordinances, uh, related to purchasing as revised seven eleven twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to be clear, there's gonna be another vote, though. Yeah, this is just to.
I understand, okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Bureau God?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
So that's the public.
The hearing is open. I guess you ask if anybody has any comments.
Anyone you'd like to speak in regards to the, um, revised ordinance, um, section six dash four of the Code of Ordinances and chapter six, article one, which is referring to, um, purchasing and competitive bidding procedure?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, just simply across the board. Generally, if this has to be done, it's an emergency. Uh, I, I think Mr. Zalinski, with his background within different department, uh, could make a quick judgment on that, and I don't see why we're taking this power, so to speak, away from him. Again, and putting it on, uh, someone else, that I, I feel that he'd be more knowledgeable, and if it's an emergency, we'd get it done quickly.
So, so can I just, I'm allowed to speak during this, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so. This is not related to emergency purchases. I've said that before, I'll say it again, not related to emergency purchases. If something breaks down and there is an emergency needed, that is a separate provision of the purchasing law by the state, as even defined in our own ordinance. This is in the instance where you don't need to go out for a competitive bid. It's not a sole source, it's not like a, a list of other areas. And it's never been on the administrator, or, I know the language changed, but it's, the original ordinance, when it was, when we were first discussing it for a thousand, it was always on the finance director. If we're saying that it's falling on the administrator's shoulders, then we need to switch who the purchasing agent of the town is, and make Paul the administrator, or any future administrator, the purchasing agent. Because our own ordinance, and if we don't, and the finance director is not being that person and not making those decisions, we're violating our own ordinance, our own charter, and the state law in that instance. So, we really need to be, like, these are serious offenses. If we violate purchasing, that's like a misdemeanor crime. That's not anything small, and it's not to say it's, it's, we're doing it because we wanna add more red tape. It's just a case in point. I went out, my fridge broke. I literally Googled refrigerators. I got one, two, three, four, five, six different sites. I called a few places. All you need to do is just print those out, circle the three, and say, this is the one we're going with. One is four thousand, one is three thousand, and one is thirty-five hundred. I like the thirty-five hundred one, that's the one. And if, and if you call a place and they're like, oh, I can get to you in six months, and, you know, Tony, the finance director says, you know, that's too long, I can do somebody, I have somebody that can do it today, great, there was the attempt. It's not anything more complicated. I gotta call Point of Water, because we're still in the public hearing. We haven't even closed the public hearing and began discussion yet, right? I asked the solicitor if I could speak. He shook his head.
Well, I don't ever remember a treasurer doing that in this town, while I've spent on this seat. Mr. Jesus or anybody else, they never did.
It actually speaks all through this and refers to the finance director through this whole.
But I, I, they may refer to it, but I don't remember it being done.
So then, Paul, would you wanna be the purchasing agent?
No, I do not. I have enough responsibility, as there is no.
No, no, you can't, but that way.
No, I'm saying that would be, if we wanna go that route, we need to change then the purchasing agent, or hire a new purchasing agent if we don't think the finance director's qualified to do it.
No, no.
Not saying, I've worked with Tony recently on purchasing stuff. He's, he's knowledgeable, but I'm just saying we need to really then rethink more than just an ordinance, if we're talking about who's actually doing the purchasing requirements. That's a much different conversation than the ordinance.
But with that explanation, I, I understand it. I've never said, I didn't think this young man was brave. I, I, I feel we're very lucky to have him, and if I told him that, we'll lock him in here if we have to, um, and, uh, it's just that the way you put this forward, it's, it's fine. But the way it's been done was not like that, not in the time that I've, I've been here, or sat there, and I sat there since nineteen seventy-five.
I don't, I don't find that to be true, because the finance director always handles the bids and stuff, right?
So, from what I've experienced, I mean, I don't know what, the way it was handled when Cynthia was here, but I know that when I walked in, Karen was handling bids, and then per Town Council, it was instructed to me to now handle bids, so I, and I now handle that. I know from experience from other towns that I talked to, other municipalities, it's either on three different people. It's on the administrator, or it's on the finance director slash treasurer, or it's on a specific procurement individual. And I have, I have specific examples of each one who do that, so.
So Claire's not wrong. She, Claire's saying that, Claire's dead on, right, when she's saying it was never the finance director, cause it was, uh, uh, what's her name at that point?
It was Karen, well, prior to me, prior to when, when Cynthia was here, that I, I don't know.
Right, so Claire is, is right.
Before that, too.
Yeah.
Right, so Claire's right in what she's saying. She just.
So what we're saying is we're not.
So now we're clarifying, and this is lovely.
That's what it really means. We haven't been following the ordinance with the procurement policies outlined in our own ordinance.
And you picked it up, and your explanation i- is right on, but it's nice to, what, because we had a situation where they said it should've gone out, uh, and the, though the department that made that judgment, I think his judgment was correct. It was an emergency, this had to be done, and it was done. But it made people on the other side look like they weren't checking. Well, checking, if there's an emergency and you're gonna have frozen pipes and no frozen pipes, you get fixed, and it was in the five thousand, allowed, according to, to, uh, our little rules and regulations.
And ju, I'm gonna read just a real quick section. On the purchasing A.
Yeah, one A.
One A. It says, except as otherwise required by law, all contracts for, for the performance of any work or the furnishing of materials or both not to exceed an aggregate amount of five thousand, as adjusted by CPI, and every purchase of goods, merchandise, or materials or any description on behalf of the town, or for use of any office of body, board, commission, or department of the town, excluding the school department, shall be made by the town finance director. So this was not changed. A, emergency method. In the case of a public emergency because of accident, injury, or other cause requiring immediate action, the proper offices of all departments in charge with the approval of the town administrator and the town council president, so dual authority, cause any necessary repairs to be made in any plumbing, heating, et cetera. So there's special sections for emergencies. We keep getting caught up on emergencies, and that's a whole separate section altogether.
And, and in the past, the department that had it, like, it headed that, you know, it had to be done through Fox and Rex. He made the right decision. As far as I'm having it done, it needs to be done, and we don't want more finan, uh, more of a financial burden. But the practice hasn't been that way. The way you're explaining it, I think it's great. It's clear. We've cleared this up. But it wasn't that done, that, done that way before.
And you gotta keep in mind, there's gonna be the law of unintended consequences that are gonna happen when you pass this. Uh, it's gonna, I don't know how you, I think it's possibly gonna streamline anything, but it's gonna actually have the opposite effect. It's not just gonna be for incidences with the town administrator on purchase, it's gonna be everybody. It's gonna be every townhead, it's gonna be the public, pub, a director of public works, it's gonna be for the police chief as well. Everybody has, gonna have to go out and get three bids, e, even if it's under five thousand dollars. That's all gonna be put on Tony to go ahead and verify, or make the three bids himself. This is gonna create unnecessary paperwork, unnecessary bureaucracy. Alright, this is just a solution looking for a problem. This doesn't solve anything, Doug. If we wanted to, i, i, at the last, at the last, um, council, we amended the ordinance to make it up to five thousand dollars because it mirrored the state, the state law.
If we wanted to, at, at the last, at the last council, we amended the ordinance to make it up to five thousand dollars because it mirrored the state, the state law. The state law brought it up to five thousand dollars, we changed our ordinance to make it five thousand dollars. What you're doing, this amendment that you want to make, it goes against the spirit of that law, of the state law, and the spirit of the, the amendment that we made last time, which is to streamline things and make things less complicated. So, the administrator, in that, in the case, he had the authority to go ahead and make a five thousand dollar purchase, and of course, he's gonna use his best judgment, of course, he's not gonna go out and get the highest bid. He's gonna look around, he or she, whoever that person may be, this feels punitive to me, all right, and because the timing of this, it makes it feel punitive. Not to go back to the grant writer, but when he, after, this all came about after the administrator approved the five thousand dollar purchase to hire the grant writer for one month, and everybody's hair caught on fire, and we had to go out and change, we had to go out and make things. Everybody said that he was not following policy, but he was, because two weeks later, he showed up with this ordinance, and he showed that he had the authority to make a five thousand dollar expenditure. So instead of saying, you're right, you're right, you did have the authority to do that, what are we doing? We're saying, yeah, I don't care if you're right, we're gonna change, we're gonna change the ordinance on you, it feels punitive. And it's unnecessary, it creates unnecessary paperwork, and it's gonna slow down the system. The whole purpose of making it to five thousand dollars was to make the system more efficient. You're adding another level, another layer of paperwork that's unnecessary.
So, the actual state law says that the town has the ability to add on additional areas, but not to exceed the five thousand dollars. So, this town of Lincoln, for example, city of Lincoln, for example, they have a similar requirement for their purchasing agent to do the same thing. They're a larger town than us, they have a lot more going on, they, they seem like to have no problem with it. And we can use that all we want, I mean, I believe, as a council, we've gotten very focused on who's sitting in what chair, and who's
That's right.
Is this impacting, like, this is nothing against Paul, this is nothing against Tony, this is nothing against any of us, this is, this is about, you know, making sure that we're following things correctly. I have not heard in one meeting so far, not one person sit up here and say, ah, you know what, I just picked up the phone and, the first person sounded good, that's the person I went with. We already do this, and so why not just codify it, why not just make it part of the standard practice? So in five years from now, we're not up here and we're just accepting the first bid, and all of a sudden, it's, oh yeah, I need this, oh, it's four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, well, what happens? I mean, John, you even said it just not that long ago, what happens if somebody can do the same service for cheaper? But we just say, oh, it's up to the five, four or five thousand dollars, and we know that the four nine 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 meets that criteria, so we're gonna go with them.
Well, we have to trust the administrator, we gotta trust Mr. Pending us, we gotta trust the police chief, right? Because I'll tell you what's gonna happen, is next time, and it already happened, right? The director of public works comes up here and he's saying, and I'm saying, well, did you get three bids?
That's a different circumstance, that's a whole different circumstance.
But that's gonna be, that's how it's gonna go.
It doesn't apply, John, I'm not, I'm not gonna get in the back and forth. The NPA is a separate process altogether for competitive bidding. This is for the instances of, like, outside of that, that far below that five thousand, we don't have, and it's not even a bid, it's not a formal bid, it's just getting three quotes. That is, we keep saying bid, and we keep throwing around all these other things, I'm not asking Tony to post bids for every time somebody needs a big pen from W B Mason, I'm saying, just go out, get the three quotes, print them off. I mean, if you worked in any, if you, outside of the municipal sector, this, this is already standard practice. I mean, you go out and you have to go to your purchasing procurement, and they say, okay, what's your authorized limit, oh, you meet the limit, okay, did you get the quotes? Okay, you got the quotes, that P O signed, you're good to move forward. So, this really shouldn't be that much hard, in today's day and age, I could Google three quotes right now and send an email or text to Tony, and say, Tony, here's, here's my three quotes, am I good to move forward? Tony says, yeah, I'm good to move forward, if he needs to consult with the administrator, the administrator weighs in, and whoever else needs to weigh in, I mean, it's not, it's not really that much red tape extra added, it's just Following the procedure and standardizing it.
What problem was occurring that this solves?
I haven't said it was solving a problem. All right, the grant writer situation became a whole separate issue all unto itself, we want to use that as the example. That whole thing was a mess because the law changed, it's in the middle of review, you know, nobody knew what version was gonna be corrected, yes, the administrator did come back with one a few weeks after the whole fact. So that was a whole other set of circumstances, I mean, that answer, that night, we were asking for two meetings, who had the right answer, and we, we couldn't get it, because, again, well, the website needs to be updated and revised, and it's, it's through another process altogether, which we'll be voting on those changes again in the future. So, it doesn't, I wasn't saying it was solving that problem specifically, everyone wants to think everything is a reaction in this town when something changes, it's really just saying, hey, we're already doing this, let's add it to our ordinance and move on.
So the way your amendment would be, the revised version actually says if the amount of the procurement is more than twenty-five hundred,
Mm-hmm.
but no more than five thousand, the finance director shall attempt to secure three firm quotations from qualified vendors and award on the basis thereof. So, it's pretty broad, shall attempt to secure three firm quotations from qualified vendors. And then give them, you know, giving the director and whoever has requested that leeway to make a decision based on what they see fit. I don't think it's overly burdensome, I mean.
Yeah, because there may be times that you can't get three quotes, you can only, you know, depending on, depending on what you're trying to purchase or do.
We don't have an electrician in any department, a school, et cetera, there's no licensed electrician, we don't have a licensed plumber either. They left us. So if there's a fast, okay, you're having a big game, but what, something wrong with the lights, you're gonna have time to try to say, gee, can you come with me tonight, it's like five hours.
No, 'cause it, and here really, it does state clear that emergency method is totally different, separate. So, emergency method, we can't, I think that would be very restrictive and imprudent of us to do that. I mean, you've got to allow someone when there's something that comes up to be able to react quickly.
I mean.
And that does, we're not changing that, that's already in the.
That's already in it, and technically, the way, if we really want to be stickless to our own ordinance, that requires both the administrator and the council president to approve that purchase, not one or the other. So, I mean, if people want to make that an, an or type situation, I'm fine with that, but, you know, there's reasons why towns and cities have ordinances related to purchasing, it's not, it's something that's supposed to have enough guidelines, or guidelines around it to ensure that everything is being followed appropriately, it's not on any individual or any purpose. You know, it shouldn't be taken personally, if it is, then I'm sorry, but it's not, that's not the way I'm looking at it, it has no, it doesn't devalue anybody sitting in any position or anybody doing any role.
I think the finance director has enough on his plate that he doesn't, now he's gonna have to start going and double checking and getting three bids on everybody who wants to make a purchase between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars.
He can also authorize a duly authorized representative, so if there is somebody like, that he wants to do that, it's in the ordinance, he can say, hey, you know, Karen, or hey, whoever you wanna, you can do this, I'll review the final and be good to go.
But I'm also gonna say, I mean, because I deal with it every day at work, it, stuff has to go through finance, so you have a handle on things, if you don't have a handle on things, then forget it. You have no idea what vendors you owe money to, you have no idea, it has to go through finance. Finance controls the, I mean, we don't do checkbooks here, probably, we don't do, right, in your world, you can breathe that, that sigh of relief.
I got that brush.
You know what, I mean, in the real world, there's checkbooks, there, you have budgets, you have forecasts, and that's what your spending is, and even though you have five thousand dollars in a line item, you still have to do a P O, you have to get it approved, you have to follow the process. And that's, that's part of your job, that's, as a director, as a department head, as, that's your job. You, you have a department, you have to run it, you spend the money you have, but it also has to get approved, and that's what we're doing here, we're street, it's actually streamlining, because now, Tony's gonna know where his money's being spent, who he owes money to, for what. So when we are at a council meeting, we have a question, Tony can be like, yeah, that was for this, because he's aware of it, because his department heads aren't just going out spending all this money. I mean, this is just bringing in the controls a little bit and knowing what is, is happening out in other departments. I, I can't say it any more than that, I mean, that's all it is, and, and for people to be turning it personal, it, it's not that, I mean.
Well, the reason why it feels personal, Madam President, is because at the last, when we, when we made this amendment at the last council, Paul Vadnay made the motion, you seconded it. There was no discussion of any of this, nothing, the, the rules of finance haven't changed in a year and a half, and there was no, this was never discussed, we, we were perfectly content with the way that we, with the amendment that we made. And then all of a sudden, the incident happens where he goes out and spends the five thousand dollars, and now, all of a sudden, this is the most important thing in the world, we gotta get this done. It was, why wasn't it important a year and a half ago?
Well, it is important, because we should be getting three quotes when we're spending this kind of money.
Shouldn't we have a year and a half ago?
Yeah, but maybe it just slipped through, John, I mean, I'm sure there's things that you voted on in the past or haven't voted on in the past, that now maybe you think like, hey, maybe that should happen.
The timing, though, it's the timing.
Okay, well, the timing brought it up.
It seems punitive against the administrator.
Well, you know what, this is a public hearing about an ordinance, and I think it's going way off.
I think we're into discussion now, but is anybody in the public want to speak?
Well, I, I would like to address some of what was said.
Yeah.
So, so the procedure is, I'm sure everybody's aware of it, a department head, whether it be police chief, fire chief, D P W, even water and sewer, who, of course, answers to the D P W, they come in with a purchase order, a request. It's looked at by the finance director, it's looked by, looked at by the administrator, and it's either approved or moved on. So now, if we're gonna use, what's the term, a good faith effort to, good faith effort, attempt to secure three firm quotes. You heard tonight from the water and sewer superintendent, went out for an R F P and only one company bid for the Comstock tank. He documented it. He documented it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now to ask the finance director to get involved with everything over two thousand five hundred dollars, or the appointed person within the finance department to look at this, it is gonna be totally inefficient. So what do you want to use for documentation, hang on, to make a good faith effort, what are, what are you looking for as a good faith effort? Say, hey, I called three companies and nobody wanted.
Send an email, I called three companies, here's the summary, I do it all the time, here's three, here's three people I spoke to, here's the summary of that conversation, and there you go. I mean, in, in this instance, can we all agree that the finance director, I don't want to use names, the finance director is the purchasing agent of this town? And I just heard that we need to put trust in the people running those positions. And so, if the administrator is dual signing off on the administrator's work, on the finance director's work, then the ordinance should reflect that, then the ordinance should be updated, that the finance director and the administrator need to approve any purchase for those things, and just add them together. I'm actually relieving you of work, Paul, in this ordinance change, in all honesty.
The administrator and the finance director.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
I am relieving them of that extra work, they shouldn't have to be overlooking the finance directors every move when it comes to five thousand dollars or less.
But currently, we do.
But then I would say that we're being inefficient.
Every purchase order that comes in gets looked at by the finance director as well as the town administrator.
And that's great that you, that you as the administrator right now, I'm not saying it's gonna be the same for every administrator, but it's great that if you have as the administrator, or past administrators have done that, I would think that that would be part of the process in general, the, hey, you know, is this bid look good, do you have any thoughts?
You have a past administrator, why don't you pose a question to a past administrator?
I will, I will in a second, I'm finishing my thought, Mr. Administrator. So, at the end of the day, this is a purchasing agent decision. It's not your decision, it's not Kim's decision, it's not any future administrator's decision, unless that ordinance is changed. It sits on one person and it sits on Tony. If Tony goes out at the finance director, and the water department comes to him, and they say, hey, you know what, we went out to R F P, they came back at four thousand, they were the only one we got, Tony says, okay, you got your three people, I'm good. If he says, hey, I called around, I can only get three quotes, but two people can't come for six to eight months, and one person can come tomorrow, good, send me an email, Paul's off. I, I don't want to speak for the finance director, but that would seem to meet the criteria, I, I think we're overthinking this a little bit here.
Ultimately, ma'am?
Yeah, you're fine, I'm done.
Ultimately, payment of bills is approved by town council. So you have the department person submitting a purchase order, you have the finance director looking at it, you have the town administrator looking at it, and then it comes up for payment of bills. So ultimately, there's, let's count five, there's a number of eyes looking at this, the department person, finance director, the administrator, and five council people.
But we're approving based on the trust of the people doing their jobs.
And we don't see the.
Wait, into the president's perspective, his point of view, you have a better expense management when you have people overviewing it. Tony doesn't necessarily know the finance director, what if somebody doesn't communicate to him, what if somebody says, hey, I entered into a contract for four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, and Tony doesn't know? That is a huge problem, because now we have to pay that bill if the work's all done. So you're saying that that is a good solution?
No, you talk about trust, you mentioned the word trust.
I, I, I am trusting people to do their job, I am trusting Tony as the purchasing agent to authorize him between this amount and five thousand or less, even if this wasn't here. But it shouldn't have to be, well, this person, this person, this person, if that's the way that it works, fine. But it ultimately comes down to the finance director's decision to say yea or nay, in terms of what gets on that payment of bills, in terms of what comes to us in terms of expense management. So that's all I'm saying, it just falls on Tony as the finance director to be the one that says, you, you got your three quotes, I feel comfortable with it. If I don't feel comfortable with it, or I don't agree with it, then, you know, we'll have a separate conversation.
I'm not arguing about whose responsibility is ultimately, town charter, the finance director, got that. Talking about efficiencies, is it efficient that anything over twenty-five hundred dollars has to make a good faith effort to get three quotes?
Yes.
You may get one, you may get, you may get none.
It is good faith, it is efficient.
I don't believe that that's efficient. Why does the state, so if you want to follow the state law, like most communities, you mentioned the town of Lincoln, maybe they, maybe they need to review their ordinances, maybe they, maybe.
I'm not getting into the back and forth with you, Mr. Minister, I'm about to say, if anybody has to make a comment in the public, comment it and otherwise call the vote.
I'm still not, maybe I'm not finished.
We're in the public hearing, so I think we should ask if there's other people that need to speak.
Does anyone want to speak on this topic? Okay, once again, does anyone want to speak? Want to make a motion?
I can make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Early on, in this whole conversation, I called point of order, that, and Doug said that the solicitor advised him that anybody can speak during, during public comment. It seems to me that the administrator was in the process of speaking during public comment, and he got, she just got shut down.
So can I address that, since you just addressed it to me? I'm not gonna get into this back and forth, I feel like I've already entered into this like, personal debate here, so, moving on. All we were trying to do is, if there was anybody that wanted to speak in the public, we could keep talking, but let's just get out of the public hearing, and then we can keep talking, the administrator can keep talking all he wants, he could filibuster this if he wants to, I'm not gonna debate that. But all I'm saying is that we just need to close the public hearing so we can move on with the rest of the discussion, that's all. Nothing personal, but it's becoming personal, it's very obvious, it's becoming very personal up here. And it's personal because I'm the one presenting the legislation, I feel like, because of what's happened, there's, there's nothing here, this isn't, this isn't related to the grant writer, this isn't, I've been actually looking at this for a while. So, that's all I'm gonna say, and I think we have a motion in a second, and we should just call the vote.
Mr. Biergad?
This is a vote to close the public hearing, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Mrs. Solicitor, what's the next step?
Oh, I think the next step would be have a motion on the second reading. You have to approve the, the ordinance as amended.
Anyone like to make a motion to have the second reading on, on this ordinance?
I'll move.
To approve is having to approve.
Motion to approve.
To approve the revised version of seven eleven twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
We have a discussion.
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Mr. Administrator, you can continue to speak.
I've expressed my concerns about the inefficiency of what's being presented here this evening. Councilman Ogier, you and I have had a separate conversation on this, and we kinda joked about going out, getting, how I went out for air conditioning at my house, and you went out to get votes. This is not a household, it's a fifty million dollar organization. So I, I've said pretty much all that I have to say, and I appreciate you bringing it back to me, thank you.
You're welcome, and I'm just gonna say, fifty million dollar organization, there's even tighter expense management control over fifty million dollars, I mean, as Kim said, there's no checkbooks here, I mean, we could get really, really detailed in terms of that. So, I don't think anybody's recommending that level of expense management, but, you know, you've said it yourself, Paul, you know, you, you do it already as part of the standard practice. This is just looking to codify and to make it part of the, the future, whoever sits in your seat next, you know, whoever sits in the seat after that person, and the person after that, like, or who's on the council, who's in the finance director role. Just to provide clarity around it, that's all, I'm not, this isn't looking to be personal or anything like that, and I hope you wouldn't take it like that. That's not the. That's not the intent of, of what this change was.
Counselor, I don't take it personal, and I think you and I, we had that discuss. I don't take this personal, I just think it lacks efficiency. And at that point, I think I've, I've aired my concerns to the public as well as to town council. So whomever the town administrator is, whomever the town council is, that'll be the, the decision always lies with town council.
They could change it.
You know, I'd just like to say that I'm not a big believer in coincidences. This, the timing of this, it came up right after the administrator approved the $5,000 expenditure for the, for the grant writer, and everybody lost their minds over it. When, and when, when we all learned in the end that he was well within his, his right to make that purchase of the, authorize the expense of, expense of the grant writer for one month. So, it's, it's, there's no way that, I mean, it's too much of a coincidence that, so he, he comes up and he produces the paperwork and says, look, I was well within my right, and then the very next meeting, oh, look at what we got, we're gonna make a, a change to the, to the ordinance. That's, I don't believe in coincidences, Doug. It's, it's just too much. It seems punitive. It seems like you're just kinda clipping the administrator, administrator's wings. But in the process, you're also gonna be clipping everybody's wings, okay? The DPW, the police, everybody who wants to make a purchase over $2,500, it's not just gonna apply to him. So now when we do the payment of the bills, when we go down, if we see a purchase of over $2,500, it's a fair question to say, did you get three bids? We're gonna have to go through the whole, all the, all the bills, and we're gonna have to ask that question every time.
But how am I clipping their wings? You keep saying the same thing over and over, John. How am I clipping their wings?
Because the administrator made a, made the right move, okay? He made the right move, and instead of saying, yeah, you're right, you made the right move, he said, yeah, you made a right, made the right move, but we're gonna make it so you can't do that again.
How have I said that?
Because with the whole thing with the grant writer, okay?
Have I said, have I said it's about the grant writer, though?
We never said it was about the grant writer, but I'm just wanting to say, I don't believe in coincidences.
There's a picture being painted here that this is related to it, and personally for me, I didn't care about the $5,000. I, I think I've said that already. I didn't care that it was 5,000 a month. What it was about was the RFP, that we still have not figured out in terms of who we're hiring. We authorized $60,000. We don't even have a committee, but sometimes we think we have a committee. So for me, it's always about, you know, are we having a process that's consistent for the future? And, and longer-term planning, and, you know, it's great that Paul was correct in that instance. I applaud him for being correct, you know, he, he should know the ordinances. He should know the things that he's doing on a day-in, day-out basis, more so than sometimes you and I should know because we're not doing it every day. We have these discussions and, you know, we look for ways to improve the community. But to say it's, it's tied to it, I mean, I've had that said about me in the past, and to be honest with you, that's great. People can make that if they want, but this is nothing to do with the grant writer. I thought Lisa Andoja did a fantastic job, and I think she still would do a fantastic job if she was hired. For that, it was about the communication of the process. It was about bringing the council in. So the council knew that we were applying for grants at Halliwell and, and St. Paul Street and etc. It was just about making sure that there was clarity around that process, a separate issue altogether. It wasn't about the $5,000. It may have came across like that because those discussions went all over the place, but for me, it wasn't about, it wasn't about that. It was about how do I look to make the town better? And I think this is a way to standardize that and provide clarity for future finance directors, that's all.
So now we have a motion and a second, right? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
No.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
All right, the next one is discussion by council vote on other action on statement of work for improvement to town website, Mr. Ogier.
So, in speaking to the solicitor today about this and the agenda item, I think we can actually look to push this out until the August 7th meeting. There just needs to be some clarity around finalizing some of the contract, in some of the agreements. But what I am gonna look to ask for is that, you know, the council at least authorizes me, Tony, and Paul, and if somebody else in the council wants to be a part of it, to continue discussions with Civic Plus in, in hopes of having something finalized for council approval on the 7th. You're looking at two statements of work, or two scopes of work. One is for a standard, standard work, it's just a very simple product that they offer now as their basic entry level point, and the next other two are the premium package. You'll see that those have been severely discounted, you know, they, they are able to push off the yearly bump or the yearly maintenance to help push continuing updates and four-year refresh, etc. There's, there's other things that go with that. Civic Plus is used by almost every website in the state. They're used around the country. They take pride on being 100% for municipal staff, and they currently host our site now. The site hasn't been refreshed in a number of years, and so we would be looking to, to improve the site by getting on a newer platform. And it's about an 18 to 24-week turnaround if we end up finalizing this with them. So in theory, we could have a new website just shortly after the beginning of the new year or sooner, where we could put on video, we could put on, like, as like the header. The difference between the premium and the standard is the premium has better functionality for end users, so like the residents or the businesses of towns, it's more customizable. There's a lot of additional features in there that people can take advantage of. The administrator's been brought in, the finance director's been, been brought in. They both had opportunities to, to weigh, we've had some calls with them already. So it's been very collaborative and, and there's been a lot of due diligence. The finance, the solicitor has started looking at it, and as I said, his recommendation was to push it. So I'm just asking that we take a more formal action and just ask that the council continues forward in the hope is, as long as the finance director approves for August 7th.
So we're going with Civic Plus because they're the ones that have the most experience with municipal websites?
And that's your recommendation, right?
Yes.
It's all in.
And, so we want to push it off, is what you're saying?
I would, I would ask, it doesn't really need to be in speaking to the solicitor, but I think it would be good to, if the council would just vote to authorize Paul, me, and the finance director just to have those continued conversations with them, so that we can, you know, hammer out some of the contract issues and then present the final statement of working and contract to the council for August 7th. Unless, I mean, the solicitor weigh in, is that, would you advise that, or does it need to happen?
Yeah, well, as you, as you mentioned, this, the quotes do not include the contract. I was asked last week to review the contract. The contract contains about, I don't know, 90 pages of three different sections. I reviewed them, I commented on them. There's a lot of sections that I would not want you to agree to. I don't want you to agree to, to litigate in Kansas if you have disagreements. I don't want you to agree that their liabilities are limited to $100. I don't want you to agree that your liability is unlimited. There's a whole list of adhesion provisions in the contract because it's a one-sided contract that I would be advising you not to sign. But I think an opportunity to speak to the parties, we may be able to hopefully negotiate those terms. I, I don't have anything to say about the value of the contract, but the terms of the contract that are not before you.
Oh, okay.
And you can't vote on a contract that's not before you. And that was my advice to the, the vice president. Put it off a couple weeks, let's try to talk to them about those terms and conditions, and get it, hopefully, I think, whatever is good for us, whatever is good for them should be good for us.
Well, this gives us at least the statement of work, which is good for three options, so we can look at if we have questions, we can give you a call when we meet with them again.
So, Mr. Ogier, you're looking for a vote to?
Authorize myself, the administrator, and Tony, the finance director, to keep speaking with Civic Plus and the solicitor, I guess, to finalize the contracts, language, to make sure everything looks good. Just so every, every i is dotted and every t is crossed.
Okay, so moved. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, Doug, great job, it's important, and it's way out of my area, but I think you're doing great, and it's a good thing that you picked up on this and you're going with it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, at some point, I know Tony's mentioned it, he's been looking into .gov, so there may be a separate piece altogether, but it's unrelated, but it's, I mean, I guess in theory, it should line up, but you may see something else different to bring the website. That way, it's, you don't get something from the administrator and it's not the administrator, it's somebody else because it doesn't have a .gov, it could be anybody.
It could be security.
So it's just extra security that the town's?
Yeah, the .gov will likely be through our IT service, Vertical Six. They'll be heading that, whereas Civic Plus is heading the website version of this.
So we'll make sure all that's included.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be good to have everything migrated over so that we're efficient.
It might not coincide in terms of timing, but regardless, council will be included in, you know, handling that switch over from .org to .gov for security reasons.
And for a short time, several months or whatever, you could have everything redirected. Anybody who's still, who's still using .com can be redirect, can automatically redirect into .gov, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure they're very certain that there's parameters set in place for stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and there's, yeah, thank you for reminding me. And I've been informed that there's grant money available for the costs associated with it. I, I haven't touched on this because we've been focused on the website a lot lately with the budget and everything. I haven't jumped back on that yet. So I have to, you know, put my finger back on the pulse on that, but, and figure out where we're at. But, yeah, there is grant money available to take care of some of the costs for that, at least for the first year for subscription-based.
And then, if, if we go with them, I forgot to say this, then, you know, we would get a designer pretty quickly, and the process starts to move pretty quickly, but I would probably then in the future ask to form a, like a, a committee of town staff, you know, to at least have way and input on what they would like to see from their roles and what they've currently experienced, and so that we take all those things into consideration, so that we're improving it for the end, for the actual people that are using the site every day.
And, yeah, so within the plethora of discussions we've had with Alex, who is our point person in terms of sales for Civic Plus, between all three of us and him, he, I, I had asked if we could have a trial run with some of the staff here. He said yes, and then I asked if we could have a focus group, kind of, lack of a better term, a focus group, even to have some of, some of the taxpayers access the group, access the website, and get their feedback, because I know that there's obviously been some taxpayers who don't like the web, the current website, and they have some feedback. So I, he said that that could be something that we could set up at some point, which is, again, which is why we think Civic Plus is such a great choice, because, you know, normally websites don't do that.
So would it kind of be like a beta testing group?
Yeah, and, thank you, an alpha group, an alpha-beta group, that's what I was trying to get at, yeah.
So like you would, so in that instance, I said committee, I guess more focus group is the better word, but, you know, the, people could come back with a whole bunch of changes, they would make the changes, and then say, is this what you were thinking? And, you know, with videos, some of them, they have like, like, like a drone that overshoots the town, like, I don't know if maybe Christian is willing to help us with some of the video on the banner, so when people view it, they can see the town and all sorts of great things. And it's really cool, some of the stuff that they're allowing, they allowed us to do on the newer platform, which I think is gonna really enhance the use.
Yeah, it, it's gonna be a pretty drastic change from what we have now to what it's gonna look like. It's gonna, it's gonna look really good, I think.
I agree. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote on other action on tax and penalty adjustments, Mr. Sanage?
So we just had three, sorry, we had three individuals come in. Sorry, let me pull it back up. We have Alden, Shardier, and, or two Shardiers, last names. They had, obviously, as we always do, we had to clear out, and he passed to, they came in, paid the principal because it was over a certain amount of time, cleared out the interest, and that's that. Last time you got, council had asked that I give a running total, so I had done that, and I provided all the previous ones that the previous finance director had also made as well, just to, you know, I guess, show good faith.
Thank you.
I guess, from, yeah, it's, I guess it's approval by town council to follow through with clearing out the interest rate, writing these off, essentially.
Penalty.
Yeah. And then, completely, kind of related but separate, we are also in the works of trying to put older bills to collections, see if we can get some more free money, so, kind of related, I guess.
Someone like to make a motion to accept the penalty adjustments in the amount of $232.17?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Are we going through each page?
No, those are just backups. So is that, is that all you had?
That's it. That's the, that's the one, because I compiled them all.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Discussion by council vote on other action on budget transfer and reservation reclass FY 2024.
Excuse me, Madam President, I want to make sure the finance, I thought, I thought I heard your motion was four, $232,000?
Was there more?
Yeah, I didn't hear the number, it should be.
He's asking for a lot more than $232,000.
Yeah, I, sorry, I didn't hear the number, yeah, it should be the, the $23,786.17.
See, I don't understand where that's coming from.
That's, that's the total from all of 2023. The 2023 total write-off, penalty write-off is $23,786.17.
Then on the second page, it's $23,805,000.
That's a, that's, so there's people who have passed away, and then there's people who are still alive who go in and pay overly past due bills. That's a different, the $24,000 is different.
So which one did you approve on that?
The $23,786.17, the first one. But again, I provided all of them just to, again, just to show this is what we've been working with so far for all of FY 23.
But haven't we already approved what made up the 23, and we're just approving the 200 tonight? I don't understand.
I mean, I guess it's up to, my thought process is that we approve the new value of what is being written off, but...
No, because I, I, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but I don't know where the $23,353,000?
That's from the previous, that's from the...
So it's not on here, it's just a number?
It's the other, if you, if you look at the packet that she had, that Joanne had sent out, it's the fiscal year write-off from other, from other spreadsheets that were provided. But in just this one instance, you're writing off $232.17, but the total for the fiscal year is $23,786.17.
So the other balances have already been approved, right?
The other balances, yeah.
So then should we just do the $232,000 and just clarify that we're just approving the even prior page, just to add that line?
Yeah.
So then I will rescind my, now we're good?
No, because I said $232,000.
I just wanted to make sure, the only new number, Mr. Director, is $232.17? That's the only new number. All the other numbers?
This is the updated number, this is the one right now.
Right, but the updated number of 23, which one, $786.17?
That's the new.
In who they list of previous, that the council has already written off.
Yes, yes.
And it's just $232.17 with an updated number of previously approved. I don't need to say that.
All right, but I, but now that you're saying that, I have another question because it says, FY 23 total tax adjustments is $432,41, I don't, where is that number coming from? Because it says it on the second page, too. I guess it's the back of this one, the deceased, but that's on both.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me pull up the Excel sheet real quick, just to see what it's referencing. Give me one second.
Yeah.
That's the deceased, I'm all, yeah.
But it's coming up on both pages.
I'm thinking it's linked to your deceased report, Tony.
It's all right.
If I had to venture, I guess.
But I don't know where this number's tying in, this $23,353. Know what I mean?
Yeah.
I can't see that tying in anymore.
No way.
Tony, I think it's linked to your deceased page.
It's linked to...
It's linked to a cell on the title of the deceased page.
But then, Tony, as you're looking at that, I can't seem to tie that first number, $23,353.76, to anything, like any of these sheets, so... like any of these sheets, so unless that's before the, I don't know. Unless that's the twenty-three three fifty-three and the?
I think it's all the sheets.
Yeah, so that would be twenty-four two thirty-five.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, is that the total of all the previous ones, it seems to be seven? Is this one? Yes.
It doesn't sound good.
Did you COVID out of here?
I thought you were still online. Can we just do this next week, Tony?
We can.
All right. So can we rescind that motion?
Then I'll rescind my motion and paper this for next week.
All right, so we rescind the motion and a second?
May I ask a question, Tony?
Yes.
Do we change something? Like, why is it so complicated all of a sudden?
Uh, it's because I'm inheriting it, to be completely honest, I'm inheriting this Excel sheet and there's no, uh, this is kind of something that was just handmade, so, um, still trying to figure out the, the kinks of how it was made.
So let's just wait till next week, it's fine.
That's why, yeah, it's, it's try to, it's tough to pick up where it was left off, essentially.
So, Mrs. Lisa, we rescinded the motion and the second, do we need a roll call on that?
Well, do we need a vote, um, would there be a vote for, yeah, take a vote?
Well, not a vote, not all of them, no, just motion, second, that was it.
On the two three one? Okay, so then you rescinded it, we're good?
We're good, okay, all right, so we'll move on, we'll come back to that one next week. Okay, so discussion by council vote of other action on budget transfer and reservation reclass FY twenty twenty-four. Ms. News, but I assume Tony, you're handling that?
Yeah, that was supposed to be under me, um, so this is what the, as it says, this is what the council had approved for reclassing of reserves during the budget meeting. It's pretty much, all of it is all under DPW. I just, you know, if you guys, if the council has any questions, I guess, but this is all things we had discussed during, like I said, our last meeting and approved, it's just representation of what it's supposed to look like now.
Uh, anyone like to make a motion to approve these, uh, proposed reclass reserves?
So moved.
I guess we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Uh, discussion by council vote of other action on hiring grant writer, so this, I was bringing back up to find out where we stood because as far as I know, um, there was an email sent out by Mr. Carullo saying the next step would be to develop a committee to review, which would have been, I believe, the finance director, the planner, two people from the council, TA. That's it, okay, and there was discussion on who was going to be on it from the council. I had asked that I be on it and then Doug had said he wanted to be on it, but then Mr. Biergad said that he thinks he should be on it because he brought up the grant writer, so now we just need to figure out who's going to be on it from the council so we can go forward and do this meeting and move forward with the grant writer.
Correct, yeah, I originally didn't know that DJ had, council member DJ had wanted to be on it, so my assumption was that it was, it was automatically going to be you and Mr. Biergad, so, yeah, um, if we, I guess, like you had just said, we're going to have a special meeting regarding this?
I'm fine not being on it, it's fine, I can let John be on it, it's not, it's not a big deal, you know?
Yeah, I, I just wasn't aware of it at all.
Names are thrown out and so it's, to me, it's not, shouldn't take that much time, so.
Yeah, so we just need to find a time that we can meet, um, and I guess look at together what the proposals came back with and?
I'll send out, I, I had, I had given, I had scanned and, and sent those to the council, uh, the two that we had.
Yeah, but I mean, as that group of, I'm showing?
Yeah, but I just want to make, I'm just trying to recollect my thoughts, I had sent it out, so we all at least have it. I think we should all review it individually, come out with, because Mark had provided a rubric, look at it individually, grade each one, and then come to a, a meeting prepared.
I amended the whole, remember, I amended, uh, some, one of the ways that we should grade it as far as making, if they admit any federal grants.
You're right, right, so I think we should individually, uh, I'll set up a, I'll coincide with everybody to set up a meeting, but before that, to be as most efficient as possible, we should all individually look at them, grade them, and then come to the meeting prepared with our grades and then have a consensus of who.
Yeah, that works.
All right, so do you want to get back to us with?
Yeah, I'll send an email tomorrow of what, you know, to try and set up a date.
Okay, great, thank you.
And how soon, I'm sorry?
So just as a committee makeup and settled?
Yes.
Is that going to be voted on, so there's no?
Yeah, let's vote on that, so, uh, someone want to make a motion on who is, who the committee is comprised of for the, um, selection or discussion of grant writer?
So it will be, I'll make a motion, it will be Councilor Biergad, Councilor Alves, Administrator Wolinski, Mark Carullo, town planner, and the finance director, Anthony Sanaj.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
God, you look good tonight.
His voice changed.
I'm ahead of myself.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes, thank you. All right, the next one is, um, discussion by council vote of other action on farm, forest, open space. This was, uh, I actually spoke to, um, Ms. Saint George today, um, and just, she's still working on this, so I told her we would revisit this, um, there's, um, letters that have been sent out and it's still in the process, so once it's, um, there's more just progress and we'll come back to it. Um, yeah, it is a process, right, Anthony, you want to weigh in on this? I mean, she had to basically go out to all the, um, landowners that are under this classification, make sure they still have the DEM certification or approval, and then the ones that she did not have come back, then she needs to send out letters to say they had a certain amount of time, so it is a process and she is working on it. Um, so she has sent out letters and waiting for people to get back to her.
Is that, that's the variation in assessment, DEM for land?
It's the, yeah, farm, forest, and open space.
Okay.
That's it on that, right, pretty much?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly what you said.
Okay, and then discussion by council vote of other action on update on reservoir tax with tax assessor, same thing, she's still working on that, there's really no update on that, and we'll get an update when there's something to update.
Can I ask a question on that? Why is that so difficult? I don't understand that, because this cannot be the only, it's not the only private-owned body of water in the state or the country that you can't look and see how other people are doing it?
To be completely transparent, I'm not an assessor, so I'm not sure of the exact difficulties of how that works um, in terms of assessing property.
It, it, because OneSocket, OneSocket, does OneSocket pay taxes on the reservoir that, in North Smithfield? Does the city of OneSocket, OneSocket has several reservoirs in OneSocket, in North Smithfield? Somebody made a great deal for OneSocket a long time ago.
Yeah.
Um, do they pay taxes?
I know they pay taxes to us for something intangibles that we had talked about during one of the meetings, um, but I don't think they pay, I don't, I could ask Jen, but I don't think they pay for, for that.
That's something to look into.
Yeah, I can look into it.
If we're asking the people who own the reservoir that they got to pay taxes for the land under the water, then shouldn't everybody have to pay taxes for the land under the water?
I will, I'll get back to you on that, I guess I don't, I don't know specifically who does and doesn't pay.
Yeah, obviously, I'm here for working with someone, we can probably, you know, discuss that, yes, Mrs. Lisa?
Just to, just to, you know, this is a case with a tax appeal, just so we understand the tax appeal. The argument is about what is the, the proper assessment, um, the, uh, the, the owner is asserting they have, uh, rights on the DEM, farm, forest, and open space, and we, um, are pretty confident the law does not provide that kind of protection and, uh, so the fight will go on, but the, the numbers are not, this is not a big, a big number case.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, what they want versus what we're, we're asking is not going to amount to a lot, one way or the other. Uh, it's not a major case that the council has to be concerned with, but it's a disagreement about the value and the town has authorized the expertise of Alan Booth and he's going to provide in a, a professional opinion and he's going to testify to that opinion in court when we go to trial, if we have a trial, and a judge will decide what the value of that land is, but it's, we're, you know, it's a disagreement. They say it's X, we say it's Y, our expert says it's X, we, we don't, we don't, I, I don't know what else to say. If we got an expert that says it's X, I, I don't say you're wrong, I say can understand. Can understand.
Yeah, all right.
That's, that's where we are.
All right, it's, it's being worked on, so, um, the next one is discussion by council vote of other action on scheduling of public hearings regarding police station bond question, we basically already talked about that earlier in the meeting, so, um, we'll wait to hear for the next meeting from the MBRTF. Discussion by council vote of other action on update and schedule of public hearings on St. Paul Street project. That, I just figured maybe we could have some updates on what is actually happening there because we haven't really heard much other than, um, there's a grant or we're applying for a grant, so maybe we could at some point have some more information on what's happening with that or what it entails and, um...
Council, yep, we can do that?
Do you know when we might be able to do that?
Next meeting, if you wish.
Which one?
Next, yeah, next regular scheduled meeting.
Next regular meeting?
Sure.
Well, which one? I get a load of them, don't I?
I'll leave that the council president decide what, but it should be on a regular scheduled meeting.
All right, so our next regular meeting, well, we can, if we can have an update or, or some sort of information on what's happening with that, just so we can all be on page with that.
What other information we proceed back to the eleven and, uh, PTA and so?
Well, basically what, what's happening there, I don't think we're all, we all know like what's happening there and what created the issue to go out for, um, grants and, I guess, just explain the whole situation that's happening.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we do get questions, you know, and people are saying, why are you going there? We don't know, so it would be great just so that we're all saying the same thing and we know what the project entails, how long it's going to take, where it's going to go, who's going to get tied in, those, I think those are the things that we're looking for if you have them. Thanks.
Uh, next one is, uh, discussion by council vote of other action on athletic complex concession stand integrated speaker system. Mr. Sanaj?
So, while, if the council recollects, um, I forgot the individual's name, but, um, the technology director had come and presented the exact same thing a, a few meetings ago, like a month or two. At the time, it, apparently that quote he had received was older, I want to say it was received back in November. Um, since then, they have provided newer, updated quote, um, how much it's going to cost. It's still cheaper out of the three options that were given, so it's still the ideal choice, but I just, with newly highlighted figures, I just wanted town council approval before we can, before they continue with this.
And is money still in that account?
Yes, well, I made sure that there was about, you know, there's enough money for this.
So they're on the MPA, it says here too, so which is great?
Correct. Yeah, but prior, the, the last time he had brought it, it was just over the ten thousand, so he had to, you know, go out to bid and everything. I think it was like ten thousand three hundred.
So this is a public address system, is that what it is for the?
Yeah, yeah, PA system and?
It's a PA system.
For the football field.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Um, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract in the amount of not to exceed thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to American Teleconnect services for the installation of a PA system at the football field.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biergad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Oger?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Last item is open forum for any agenda items only, anyone like to speak on those, any of those issues?
We have beautiful, wonderful gentlemen, let's say.
Not all at once.
All right, so we have no one on that wants to speak on open forum, so the last one would be motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, meaning adjourn.